We're sitting down for Rich Canon, and so I'll be running the meeting tonight. And please forgive any missteps or hiccups since I haven't done this in a really long time. So, welcome. And I guess the first order of business is to approve the agenda for this evening. Oh, we'll call first. Thank you very much.
Marty Kane.
James Lowery.
Tom McGinn.
Roger Moore.
Susan Roth.
Jens Bergen.
Ted Ridwick Planer.
Okay. Then we approve the agenda for this evening. I don't know if all of you know what we're doing, but we have public, two public hearings and five pending applications and three new applications. So, starting with approving the minutes from September 19th, I'm going to abstain because I wasn't present. Anyone?
I'll make a motion when we approve the minutes.
Thank you.
Second.
Did we approve the agenda?
I believe, did we approve the agenda?
Oh, we're doing the agenda first?
So...
I'm sorry.
What number one is?
Yes. Let's approve the agenda for this evening.
I think I meant to say that.
Do I have a motion?
Yeah, motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay.
The question, do we want to add on to the idea of discussion of when solar farm?
That's if he comes tonight. Is he here?
Okay. I'm just saying in general for us as a thought.
I discussed that with Ted, and he thought if he came that we would add it under other business.
But if it's already written, we can.
Yep. That sounds good. Anything else, Ted? Okay. So, we have a motion to approve the agenda and a second.
That's been seconded.
As amended.
As amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. I'd like to approve the minutes of September 19th. I'm going to abstain because I wasn't present. Can I have a motion, please?
I'm making a motion to approve the minutes of September 19th.
Second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have one grammatical correction.
Please, you term.
On the second page, second paragraph.
Yes.
Third line.
Yes.
You've got the outline lots, but remaining are comfortable. I think remaining may be scratched. Did you see that?
Remaining members?
Yeah.
Perhaps?
Is that what that, okay.
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah. Have members?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
I see.
So, can we approve the minutes as written?
As amended.
As amended. All those opposed? Tom?
Look, I thought we had a motion.
Yes. And you, a second?
Yeah, a second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We have approved the minutes. Before we go to the public hearing, if anyone has a public comment that is, references an item that is not on the agenda, now's your time to speak. Any public comment?
Site walk.
Okay. So, I'm sorry?
I know, but they're there.
We missed the site walk.
Yeah, that's what Marty was just bringing up, yeah.
Marty?
We have another minute from the site walk.
Oh, yes.
Can we?
From the Cape Arundel.
Especially design stables.
From the specialty of question. Yes. So...
I'd like to just approve those site walk minutes.
What day was that from?
From the 12th. Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the site walk visit to specialty stables?
I made the motion, but he needs a second.
You were there, Tom, weren't you?
I didn't see the sample.
No, no, we're doing specialty stables.
Stanley Sables?
There, Tom.
Oh, there it is.
Yeah.
Stables?
One page quickie.
No, Miss Nellon. Wouldn't like to have seen it, but didn't.
I will second that.
Okay. The motion has been made and seconded. Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay. The minutes for September...
Do we have extensions? I'm sorry. Keep interrupting.
Yeah. At least me.
Jens wasn't there.
No, Jens was there. I wasn't.
I'm sorry. That's right, you had there. You were there.
Not at the stables, no.
You're listed.
I'm quite sure I wasn't there.
I'm also quite sure.
I would like to have seen it.
Okay, well, amend that.
So, Marty was there, I was there, Roger, you were there, and Tom, you were there.
Yeah, so we'll scratch Jens, Jens Bergin.
And Jamie. Okay, so, can I have a motion to approve the minutes for the September 12th site walk as amended?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Definitely getting better at this. Anyone opposed? Good. Okay, the specialty designed stable minutes have been approved. Okay. So, there's no public comment, and we move on to the public hearing. First on the list is specialty design stables. I'd like to open the public hearing at 7:07. Any comments, questions, criticisms? I'd like to close the public hearing at 7:07 and a half.
7:08.
7:08. Moving right along, Labby subdivision. I'd like to open the public hearing at 7:08 and a half. Any public comment? Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing at 7:09. Is that okay? All right. Moving right along. The public hearing is now closed. We are going to move along to pending applications.
Yeah.
Okay. Going to make this thing fly by.
No, you're going to like this. The plane's coming over that way.
Are the gentlemen from AIM here?
They're going to get the support for being chairman. Actually, they are.
Hi.
Where do you want me?
Right someplace where everybody can see and hear you.
Okay.
Okay.
Fair enough. Here tonight, my name's Chip Hassel. I'm the CES here representing American Iron Metal. Here tonight, we're here on the September 19th meeting back before you with a revised performance guarantee with an engineer's estimate on the closure costs for that facility. We should find that in the packet there with an estimated amount of just under $15,000 to set up an escrow account should this be approved.
Is that the only thing that was lacking was a...
They also gave us an insurance certificate.
Okay.
Insurance certificate and the...
The surety bond. Okay. So, I have a quick question on that. So, when the engineer gave you the estimate, because it seemed really low to me, and you have a lot of stuff there, how long did he think it was going to take? And were there any questions that he had?
Sure.
Because, again, it's, you know, if it's too good to be true, it's too good to be true kind of thing?
Yep. Well, I'm the engineer.
Okay.
But I relied on my client as far as how many trips it would take to take the material they have off the site, sort of put a price to that. And, you know, we went down through the list and, you know, as far as what the disposal costs of each of these items, so batteries and waste oil and things like that, that's all provided for in this estimate. But it's basically trucking costs relatively minor as far as closure is concerned for this facility.
And would they be the ones doing the moving? Or would they hire a third party to do that who would be qualified to move that stuff?
I mean, I guess that's up for discussion, I guess, at this point. But ideally, it'd be them. They would, quite honestly, and what we originally proposed was that this material is worth something, so, you know, if this facility were to go, were to go out of business, likely that material would be taken somewhere and sold. It was sort of the remaining items that I think caused the most concern.
Well, and ultimately, Susan, the escrow would be set up so that, or however the means is, in case they simply abandoned the site that it could be taken care of and cleaned up in case the owner didn't do it.
Right, and I understood that. It just seemed, it was very reasonable.
Sure.
And so, I just had a question about that. But it doesn't include any remediation to the land itself, is that right?
It doesn't. It's sort of a difficult number to estimate, given that we aren't aware of any remediation that's necessary. We have allowed for some, you know, for some testing to determine, as requested by planning board here, to see if there is any issue. We have no reason to believe that there is an issue. Groundwater monitoring's, you know, going on, surface water monitoring's going on in accordance with DEP permits. So, at this point, it'd be very difficult, I guess, to put a number on something like that.
And so, if in fact, they do do the testing, which hasn't been done yet, is that correct?
Uh, no.
Testing has been done, obviously.
Okay. Well, but I meant, so, and it's going to take a fair amount of time and effort to remediate the property, the land itself, the lot, then does that get added to the surety bond in order? Because that would be something the town of Arundel would have to pick up if you guys aren't, you know, can't be responsible for it, not that you aren't very responsible.
Sure. I guess it's just difficult to put a number on that on, I mean, we don't know what maybe there may, there's probably not an issue there. We don't know for sure, but that's why we're doing the testing. I understand what you're saying as far as come up with a number and have that in the bond. Ultimately, if they're the property owner, then they would be responsible at the state level, you know, for cleaning up that property.
But if they're in default, and all we're holding is $14,000, and there's $114,000 worth of remediation to do on the lot, it's going to take us a long time to deal with the state of Maine, get it strengthened out.
Yep.
So...
I guess I don't know what the typical course of action is here. I, you know, I sort of look at, look at Ted here on this and see what maybe has happened in the past with these sort of closure estimates.
What have you found?
Excuse me?
What have you found since this is your kind of field, okay? Where other places have closed?
Sure.
What was the...
We're typically not looking at, at...
I mean, that's an if.
Absolutely.
Okay, I mean, what I'm just saying...
I can tell you in other, in other instances, like say we have a quarry or a gravel pit, where these are more typically, you know, applied, or a landfill, for instance.
Or a gas station, perhaps, where a former...
We're looking more at these sort of conditional use applications here for industrial activities. But, your points were taken. I guess, as it sort of pertains to this ordinance, it's more in keeping with those sort of landfills, gravel pits, quarries, that sort of, you know, site. More concerned with making it safe for the public, making sure it's stable, and, you know, making sure everything's off of there that's not going to cause any, cause any issue. So, it's just difficult to, you know, put a number on, on an unknown, I guess.
Yeah, it strikes me, if there's no pollution there, 14,000's a great number. If there's pollution there, it's terrible.
Yeah.
So, I would suggest that we, that you, we amend approval of the application based upon some testing to be done to the site with an estimate what remediation would cost if in fact it's needed.
I don't know that I could come up with a number for that, to be perfectly frank with you.
Well, you said that you do testing.
We do testing, absolutely.
Okay, so...
But I could say if it's, I'm sorry, it could range, it could be a big number, it could be, it could be a small number, it could be nothing. It's just very hence calls depending on what the contamination is, how extensive it is. I think ultimately, it's...
Okay, here's a question. How much is the testing cost now?
Testing itself, we have $5,000.
No, I mean...
Your ongoing testing.
Your ongoing testing? We're not doing soils testing right now. We're doing groundwater and, and surface water monitoring.
How much would soils testing cost?
We have soils testing in there for $5,000. When this site is closed, we've included $5,000 for soils testing.
That's just for the testing and not remediation?
Correct.
If it turns out anything?
Correct. I've never run into this in the past as far as having to put money down ahead of time for potential remediation.
So, that's why perhaps the testing should be done?
Where I think probably, well, potentially, where it could already be done is in some kind of insurance that your applicant may have for the operation.
Sure. And that's, I think, part of their DEP permits that they have as far as the solid waste, you know, licenses and all that. They have to be in accordance with DEP standards, make sure they're cleaning up the site, again, in accordance with that. So, they have other sort of entities that they're, that they're answering to in that regard as well.
Okay. Let me put it this way, if we know of circumstance that they have a DEP permits or whatever else on, they haven't followed them, they're in violation of them, but there is nothing ever been set up for reconciliation.
Okay.
This is, I think, where part of us are questioning is, and this has gone through the courts, this has been danced and put around and everything else.
Sure.
And it's not necessarily made in a scrapyard or anything else.
Yep.
So, this is why we may be acting or questioning as much, because otherwise, the town might be held liable, okay? And also, too, at the same time, there are other circumstances that are coming about. Even with the EP permits that were allowed has caused problems.
Sure.
And future lifetime problems. So, that's why I'm speaking for, out loud, to the board or through the board.
Why isn't the situation where it better lend itself to the useful bond instead?
My issue with a bond is, it's an ongoing cost to hold a bond. Relatively expensive cost. You're essentially, I mean, it's more typical in like a construction, you know, realm where you have a short duration project and you have a bond to prove that you're, you're performing in accordance with, with standards.
Yes, but your permits renewed in how many years? So, a bond would be done the same way.
Well, except they just got to open a lit facility.
Yeah, as long as they stay open and with a bond.
Yeah.
So, it's an ongoing cost of business, but it gives town something more than just test results to show there's something wrong there, but there's nothing to back up the cleanup that's necessary.
Yeah. I guess this is the first thing. I've never, I've never run across having to estimate a remediation number before we know that there's a problem and actually have money down before.
That's in the, that's in the instance of an escrow, though.
Either way. I mean, a closure cost we've done for most solid waste sort of facilities like this is really, like I said, limited to your actual closure of the facility, make sure it's clean, make sure it's stable, safe. Trying to speculate what may or may not be a problem is impossible, quite frankly, to put, put any sort of an accurate number to.
You mean your crystal line shining?
I wish it were, I'll tell you what. And then you have that escrow account to pay for those closure costs.
Is the escrow, the escrow council established typically interest earning?
Yeah.
In favor of the depositor, right?
Yeah, well, we do a 10, we do a 10, I believe, year, the depositor against the interest.
Interest earning.
Which we get is, let's put it on the management.
So, that money continues to work for you?
I think that, yeah, that money continues to grow in the account, sure.
Well, I mean, they have a, you have a lot of things being stored on that site that are potentially very toxic to the, to the land.
Okay.
You have old refrigerators, there's Freon, there's a bunch of other things.
Sure.
In fact, I want to bring up something else which is perhaps related to this, but maybe not. So, I think the, it's not unreasonable for the town to try to understand what we might be looking at in the way of remediation.
Sure.
Because the bond or the surety that you're putting up is a very small sum compared to what it could cost the town to bring it up to standard.
Sure.
So, I'm sure you can figure out a way to satisfy us, show us what we're looking at today, perhaps, through testing, so we have some idea of what's potentially out there.
Okay.
And come back to us with those findings and let's have a meeting of the minds. That would be my opinion.
Okay.
But in regards to my other comment, you have a pond that's on the property murky, at best. And there's a fence that abuts or is partially visible from Route 1.
Yep.
And it is decrepit.
Okay.
And broken.
Yep.
And having raised children, I know that children, even though you don't expect it, find their way into places that they don't belong.
Yep.
So, part of your application would be to fix that fence.
If it's our fence, I'll, I'll be happy to bring it up to the owner.
Okay. So that nothing unexpected happens in that.
Yep. I can tell you, we had, those ponds were reconstructed in the last five years, maybe. And in accordance with DEP regulations and whatnot, we did sample that soil in both of those wet ponds in order to make sure that we could dispose of it in the correct location.
Would you dredge out?
Would we dredge out those ponds? So, my suspicion is that if there was anything going to turn up in the, in the soils, it would have turned up there in very concentrated amounts. And I, as I recall, I don't remember seeing anything, but I could look into that.
Well, and I'm talking about the fence as well. So, whether it's yours or not, I mean, people who own swimming pools or have an attractive hazard like that have to protect themselves from somebody falling in it and drowning. So, I think that is something that has to be addressed.
Okay, as you just mentioned, I didn't see it, but did you have that information presented already about how the ponds were done? And, I mean, this is the first time I've heard, hearing of it.
Yeah.
Okay. This also answers part of our question about soils or anything else.
Sure.
I mean, you see where...
No, absolutely. Quite honestly, I wasn't expecting the question. I didn't really think it was relevant until, until tonight, so that information is certainly available. We can provide that.
I mean, it could be put in the record. That's what I'm saying, is a longer wait.
Yep.
And that also certainly gives you a basis and a, and a platform from there or whatever.
What I want to avoid is, is saying as a licensed professional engineer that there's no contamination on that side by looking at, you know, I can't, I can't say that from two testings. You know what I'm saying?
Yes, and nobody's asked you to guarantee it in perpetuity.
Exactly.
Exactly. And I understand what you're saying. So, I guess what I, I want to find kind of having medium here, and I want to make sure that we're making, we're getting, getting you what you want. I can get you that the samples from those ponds, which I believe to be, you know, a pretty good representation of what's collected on that site and, and what sort of limits those are. We can kind of go from there, I suppose.
And some soil, and the soil testing prior to the closure of the site and the...
Yes, that's included, that's included in this estimate is the soil testing at closure.
Right, that there's no remediation. So, I would like to know what the soil testing, I'd like to have some idea of what's the soil would test, for instance, at this point in time. I mean, otherwise, it's wide open for us and the entire town is responsible to pay for the remediation of that property because it's not covered in your surety bond. And then you move and you take everything with you for $14,000.
Sure.
And we're left with a giant bill to try to make that piece of property usable, I guess.
Okay.
Susan, I have a question. Would the town be liable if they moved out of a contaminated site?
No, but we might be liable to clean it up.
Well, then, they would be liable. Right. And that's where my, my suggestion to the applicant would be to investigate what is your requirements under your state permit.
Right.
And find out if a mechanism is already in place. Because, I mean, I don't know what the, what the town's legal responsibility would be on a private property like that.
If the problem...
And I'm not saying, and I'm not, let me preface that in that I'm not advocating that we just abandon it in place, but from a, from a town's perspective, I don't know where that would, where that would lie.
Well, Jens probably would know, certainly knows better than I, but I would imagine just by discussing it here at this meeting, we've made it publicly known that we're aware that if there is a, not that there is a problem, but potentially there could be one. And then if something happens as a result, we don't get to claim ignorance because it's something that we're discussing right here at the meeting.
I don't think you know anything more about this site than you would any new site going in, though, with all due respect. I think you're, you know that there could potentially be a problem with any site. I mean...
But if somebody, say somebody was going to put an elementary school on that lot, they would have to test the, the ground to make sure that it was safe to build that building. I'm just saying, I think by virtue of the fact that we're discussing it at this point in time, we're aware of it. We, we've made people aware of it, and that, does that open the town to liability if in fact it has to be cleaned up?
Well, I don't think, I don't think we even need to go there. We have a certain responsibility, planning board members here. And I don't think it, I don't think we have to contemplate now whether we're taking liability on the town or not. We just have a responsibility to make sure it doesn't happen in the first place here in this form.
And that we don't have to clean it up and pay to clean it up. That was my primary...
Let me look into, I will look into the other state federal permits I have. I'll look into...
Insurance.
Yeah, I mean, what insurances they have. Also, I would like to look into historically what's happened, I guess, in, in some event where some industrial facility has, has closed, left town, and who's left with the bill. You know, you see all these super funds...
Look at the bills.
What is that?
Look at the bills.
I mean, that's a...
Yeah. You know, you see a lot of new state funded, you know, cleanups and things like that, but I'll, I'll absolutely look into that.
That'd be great.
I guess, from a soils perspective, just to be clear, are you looking for soils tests right now?
I think, I think, it seemed to me my colleague thought that there were some available. It sounded like...
We have dredge, samples from the dredging material that were collected in the pond.
Right, but not from the property.
Right. Yeah, did you think there were some available currently?
Well, I thought the testing was not just when they moved out that we would have some sense of what was there now.
That might be through the chair. That might be one of the ways to frame the question here, is to provide some sort of baseline of AIM or some recovery facilities been there for a long period of time. Perhaps it's, perhaps one of the ways to get a handle on whether or not there is potential contamination is testing, getting the results of the dredge, and that's the groundwater runoff, and perhaps some soil tests from the actual disposal site area, the storage site area.
Okay.
There could be soil tests, because if there's any water contamination, there's going to be soil tests first. That might go to some degree to alleviate the planning board's concerns about potential current contamination. And if it came up clean, then the planning board would be much better positioned to say that the, that the removal costs are reasonable and there are no, potentially less hidden liabilities as a result.
Okay.
So, can you succinctly encapsulate that into what we want him to do?
Yeah.
Okay. Chad is going to tell you.
Right now?
Chad is gonna tell you.
Right now? Okay.
Well, or you can call him after the meeting and he can give you a synopsis.
Okay.
No, that'd be helpful, just so I have some clearer-
Yeah, so you have clear instructions on how to do this. One thing we will need to do, Chip, that if the planning board is, is intended only in this direction, then what we need to do is you need to give us, at, request another extension.
Okay.
Because you're at the, at your sixty day as of tomorrow.
Yep.
So, you should, right now, you can make a request to the planning board for an extension. The planning board, no, they actually can't deny you that, but they did ask them.
Well, then I, I would, I would make a request for, for another extension for this project.
Move that we grant that extension.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The extension is all yours.
Yep.
And is that a thirty or sixteen?
Sixteen.
Thank you, Chip.
Yep.
We will, I'll send you a word.
Okay.
Talk to him.
All right, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along. Specialty Design Stables. We have a pending application. Any comments, questions, suggestions? For those of you who are at the sidewalk?
I'll give you a quick picture of a more well-established, prepared, clean, business in town. Anything we are looking for in place, I think it's great. I don't see any problems at all for, for move forward on this.
Yeah, I'd like to make one other thing. It was very educational for somebody not seeing or working with this type of facility. Would, would I would like to thank them.
Yes, I totally agree with what Oakes Morgan and Tom said. It is a facility we can all be proud of in town. And if you get a chance to go out there, it's not too much of a hassle. You should see it because it's quite spectacular. So, it breaks out, that's all I can say. So-
Start reading.
I assume we vote and I give you the, read the findings of fact for the Specialty Design Stables. Whereas, on August twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, the Arundel Planning Board received major conditional use application from Specialty Design Stables LLC to establish a commercial equestrian center serving sixteen plus equines in conformance with land use ordinance section nine point three, point nineteen, point two on forty-three acres of land, tax map twenty-one, lot one, located at thirty Equestrian Way in the R four district. Whereas, on September ninth, two thousand nineteen, the Arundel Planning Board conducted a public sidewalk of the project. The planning board instructed the applicant to add several minor amendments to the site map. Whereas, on September nineteenth, two thousand eighteen, the planning board determined the application complete and scheduled a public hearing on October nineteenth, two thousand nineteen. Whereas, on October tenth, two thousand nineteen, the planning board conducted a public hearing in compliance with land use ordinance ten point six, point three, point three. And whereas, the Arundel Planning Board has determined the following findings of fact and notice of decision. Findings of fact, the owners of the property are Specialty Design Stables LLC. Is the owner, the applicant, is Amanda Putek.
Yes.
Is that correct? The property is located at thirty Equestrian Way, tax map twenty-one, lot one, in the R four district. The property is forty-three acres in size. The property currently contains a large private stable, indoor riding ring, and a residence, as well as a large outdoor riding ring, six plus paddocks, and over seventeen acres of clear pasture. A manure pit is currently located on the north central portion of the property. Oops, portion of the property would be off all periodically exported off-site to compost operations. The applicant proposes to convert the private facility into a commercial equestrian center in which sixteen plus horses will be boarded, riding lessons will be offered, and equestrian events will be conducted. I think we should make events floral at that property.
I just wanna add one thing. I don't know if it's an issue or not, but it's actually Specialty Design Stables.
Oh, in other, in other places, it's actually said specially. So, like on the agenda.
It says special.
Yeah, so that's the actual name of the LLC, so I think it's probably not a huge deal.
No, it shouldn't be, but the note. Okay. Where was I here? Number five, the way I have the S. Number six, with forty-three acres of land and fifteen plus acres of pasture area, the applicant meets the minimum area equine density for thirty equines as specified in land use ordinance nine point three, point one, nine point two, A and B. The existing, number seven, the existing driveway servicing the proposed equestrian center exceeds the minimum standards of section two point three of the Arundel Street Design and Construction Ordinance in conformance with section nine point three, point nineteen, point two, point D. Eight, all stables, paddocks, and pasture areas are located more than a hundred feet away from neighboring residential structures in accordance with land use ordinance nine point three, point nineteen, point three, point A. Number nine, all existing paddock and outdoor carina fencing comply with the standards of land use ordinance section nine point three, point nineteen, point three, point C. Number ten, outdoor lighting is security based, complies with the standards of land use ordinance nine point three, point nineteen, point three, point G. Number eleven, the facility provides adequate sanitation and feed storage facilities to prevent rodent infestations, compliance with land use section nine point three, point nineteen, point three, point E. Number twelve, the facility is well buffered from adjacent residential properties and therefore is in compliance with land use ordinance nine point three, point nineteen, point three, point D. Conformance with conditional use criteria. And should we vote on each one of these as we go along?
Yes, that's what the town attorney requests.
Okay, so, as I thought, after due review and consideration, the Arundel Board has determined the application, application to be in conformance with the criteria of section nine point two, point nine of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance as follows. Nine point two, point nine, point one, that the use is compatible with and similar to the general categories of uses of neighboring properties. The equestrian center is compatible with the scale and agrarian uses in Thompson Road neighborhood.
So move.
Second, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay. So moved. Nine point two, point nine, point two, the use is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the anticipated future development of the neighborhood in that the two thousand sixteen comprehensive plan encourages the creation of the equestrian centers in the rural conservation district and hence listed as a conditional use permit in the R four zone.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So moved. Nine point two, point nine, point three, that there is adequate and safe pedestrian and vehicular access to and into the site to accommodate anticipated traffic to and from the use. The proposed use will not generate any significant trip generation except during periodic special events. Both the facility driveway and the servicing equestrian way are designed to accommodate trucks and horse trailers that will be frequenting the applicant's facility. The Public Works Department has already approved the intersection design of Equestrian Way and Thompson Road. Do I have a motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So moved. Nine point two, point nine, point four, that there is adequate water supply and sewage disposal available to service the use. Proposed use already has, is that a, an I or a one?
Has adequate water supply and septic system, has adequate capacity and maintenance plan for the collection.
Okay, is adequate water supply and septic system and has adequate capacity and a maintenance plan for the collection and disposal of manure waste generated on-site. No need for sewer service.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone, aye? Anyone opposed? So moved. Nine point two, point nine, point five, that there will be no noise, dust, odor, vibration, or smoke generated by the use that will adversely affect neighboring properties in that noise, dust, and smoke. The nature of the equestrian center does not generate any undue noise, dust, or smoke or any other nuisance. Lair, the use will not produce any lair sources for the neighborhood or adjacent properties.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So moved. Nine point two, point nine, point six, that the physical characteristics of the site, including location, slope, soils, drainage, and vegetative cover are suitable for the proposed use. The facility is already constructed and no alterations to the site layout are, are generate? And, or, is that meant to be an R or, or?
Facility's already constructed, no alterations to the site layout will be generated in additional impacts to the physical character.
So, will be generated, then?
Will generate additional impact.
Impacts of the physical character of the site.
Correct.
Okay, does that read properly now? Okay, impacted by nine point two, point nine, point seven? Are we missing the rest of that sentence?
Nope, that's, that's, that's a little sentence. Let it go. Just vote on the, the facility's already constructed, no alterations to the site layout, will generate additional impacts to the physical here for the site.
Period.
Period.
And take out that impacted by. Okay.
I mean, I'll, I'll move that.
Okay.
Second. Second.
Okay, all those in favor of that change?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Hopefully not? No. So moved. Nine point two, point nine, point seven, that the use will not constitute a public or private nuisance. No additional nuisances will be generated by the proposed site. Motion?
Aye.
So moved.
Any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So moved. Nine point two, point nine, point eight, that all other requirements and applicable provisions of this ordinance, particularly any pertinent performance standards, are met. The applicant has met all pertinent proportion, portions of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance and the street design and construction ordinance in the design of the proposed activities.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So moved. Therefore, be it resolved that based on the above findings and conclusions, the Arundel Planning Board hereby approves the major conditional use application of Specialty Design Stables LLC.
Specialty, specialty, specialty.
Especially.
Specially?
Yes. Two L's.
Oh, specially.
What, it's two L's, not, not L two?
As pointed out, two L's.
Okay. Now I got it. Specialty Designed Stables LLC to establish a commercial equestrian center serving sixteen plus equines on forty-three acres of land, tax map twenty-one, lot one, located at thirty Equestrian Way in the R four district, subject to the following conditions. One, any amendments to the site plan or this approval shall be subject to the planning board or staff review committee approvals. Two, temporary portable toilets must be deployed at equestrian events servicing populations beyond the capacity of the septic system. So approved by the Arundel Planning Board this tenth day of October two thousand nineteen.
Discussion.
Marty?
Did we get a note from the fire chief or the pile? We talked about it.
Yes. Yes, yes, he was happy with it.
Okay, thank you.
So Corinne, will you go through and make the change to the name?
No, you're ready.
All the way through, I had a feeling you would do that. So, congratulations, so.
We're not, we're not.
We need a vote on the permit, please. Don't I have myself in it?
The findings of fact.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the findings of fact?
Yep.
Okay, so.
Second.
The norm, I got it.
Got it?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No.
The motion passes.
Woo-hoo.
Congratulations.
Okay, now then.
Congratulations.
It's a beautiful facility, really.
Specialty.
You need a Mylar.
Yes, we spoke about that.
So will you get back to Tad so we can all sign it?
Yes.
Okay, so when do you think you'll have that?
When he gets it.
Well, I spoke to Jason about getting it, but Tad assured me that getting it wasn't a prerequisite to getting perm.
Getting approved.
Right.
You need to get this Mylar signed, though.
Okay, well, so I, I will make a motion to next time, put that on the application so people know and don't get to this point and then realize that they need that. I mean, I could've already, I would've had it a month ago, but I just-
Well, actually, the application says approval blank, blank, and Mylar on it, so.
Okay. So the two outstanding things were update the site plan to reflect where the manure pile was and get it later from the chief, so.
Yeah.
I only found out about that, I guess, two days ago because I came to your office for something else, so I'll get it as soon as I can.
Yeah, it's not a problem.
Okay.
Doesn't affect the approval.
Sure.
You want that signed, Mylar. You want a copy of it?
Yep.
Happy?
Yeah.
Call me.
Good.
You're done. Okay, moving right along.
We'll be back.
Not yet.
Thanks, guys.
Mr. Labby, you're next. Mr. Doe?
Yes.
You're next.
I don't think someone's gonna talk unless he's old.
Better be quiet.
I think at this point, I think we've submitted everything. I don't think we've got any more questions. And I can recall.
I wasn't at the sidewalk, so.
The rest of us were. It was, visibility was the biggest question for one. Internet, that has been very well cleared of site distance and everything else with the thought of the curve. And also, two, the way it was explained, the turn of the distance back to the abuttes, there was nothing, no problems at all.
Yeah.
I think the only other thing that we'll probably need to do when some of the planning board proceeds with this is to set up in the deeds, there's a no-cut zone.
Yeah, I hear you.
I don't have a mic. We'll have to just set up in the deeds that they, the no-cut areas shown on the, on the plan, the buffers are respected, at least the town buffer.
Around the stream. Yep.
And the, and the wetlands are not cut either. Except where you have crossings.
Right.
Except where you have crossings.
Yep.
That's about it. For the planning board to have anything else, I think everything else was solidified. Fire chief, so he's good with it. So, within twenty-five hundred feet of the, of the water source, so.
Right.
That's a part of it.
I think I remember that, too. Findings of fact.
Have them in your packet.
I have it right here.
Tad, some of your conditions here, on the sixth.
Tad, do you have any copy of that?
So leave.
There you go.
Hold on, Corinne.
No, what?
There you go.
Oh, thank you, never mind, Tad.
No, I thought we had an extra one.
I have a packet.
You will?
No.
Okay.
At least I needed this much of the last time.
You ready?
Yeah, you want me to just read it?
I won't be able to hear you.
You'll hear me.
I think I got it.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm sure.
Okay, here we go. Findings of fact, an approval motion for the Labby subdivision, October tenth, two thousand nineteen. Whereas, on July twenty-third, two thousand fifteen, the planning board received from minor subdivision application from Sean Labby to subdivide three lots on a five point seven one acre parcel, seven one acre parcel, tax map twenty-seven lot eight B, located on Camp Ground Road in the R one district. Whereas on September nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, the Planning Board conducted a sidewalk of the proposed subdivision site. Whereas on October tenth, two thousand nineteen, the Planning Board conducted a public hearing on the proposed application. Whereupon the Arundel Planning Board reviewed and given due consideration of the applicant's amended application and has arrived at the following findings. One, the owner with right title and interest of tax map twenty-seven lot eight B is Sean Labby. Two, the applicant, applicant proposes to develop three lots on the five point seven one acre, a parcel which has a net residential density capability of four lots. Three, there will be no commonly owned land and the project does not require a cluster design under the Arundel land use ordinance. Four, all lots will have driveway access and frontage on Camp Ground Road. Five, all lots will be serviced by onsite wells and the applicant has approved, provided HHE two hundred documentation that all lots can be serviced by onsite septic systems. Six, the proposed subdivision lots meet and exceed the dimensional minimums for the R one district. Seven, the applicant has submitted plans and engineering drawings, soil reviews, surveys, and hydraulic study, and a hydraulic study prepared by Sebago Technics and dated August twenty-first, two thousand nineteen. Conformance with Article eleven, performance standards. After due review and consideration, the Arundel Planning Board has determined the final subdivision plan application to be in conformance with the criteria of section eleven of the Arundel subdivision ordinance as follows. Eleven point one, water pollution. The proposed project will not discharge runoff directly into any body interval, into any water body, and provides a method of disposal and treatment that will not require a license or permit from the main DEP and meets the town water pollution control standards. Can I?
I think you.
You don't have to.
We don't have to.
Okay. Eleven point two, water supply. The proposed subdivision is not within a thousand feet. Okay. Of a public water supply and therefore individual wells and on septic systems will be installed for each residential and commercial lot. The fire chief has determined that all lots are within twenty-five hundred linear feet of a public fire pond on Limerick Road and therefore is in compliance with land use ordinance section five point seven point two.
Yeah, question, words, on septic system, is that?
On a site.
Site.
I thought that was a new kind of septic system.
Yeah.
So Corinne, will you stick that in?
On it.
Okay, go.
That's why I like to pop.
Moving right along. Eleven point three, impact on existing water supplies. The proposed project will not require and therefore not impact established for public water supplies or supply suppliers. Is that supposed to be suppliers?
Yes.
Well logs from surrounding properties indicate adequate water supply for the individual, for individual wells. Eleven point four, soil erosion control plan. The applicant has submitted a plan demonstrating adequate soil erosion control measures to protect downstream properties and exposed slope during the construction process. Eleven point five, traffic conditions. The vehicle trip generation of this project is anticipated to be less than thirty trips per day, thereby not achieving a level of service E rating during the peak hour. Section, given the geometry of the land and the nature of the development, the Planning Board did not require the applicant to provide future road access to adjacent properties. Eleven point six, sewage disposal. Sewer disposal shall be accommodated by onsite septic systems. HHE two hundred permits have been submitted to the board. Eleven point seven, solid waste. The proposed project will not generate undue solid waste volumes that will tax the town capacity to dispose of solid waste. Eleven point eight, impacts on scenic beauty historic sites and rare natural areas. The applicants have designed a large portion of the property for permitted open space that will be retained and maintained by the homeowners association. The limits of the project, forest land removal, are delineated on the record plans. There are no archaeological, historical, or historic, or critical shoreline areas identified on the site, nor are any areas identified by the main natural heritage program on the site. The shoreline.
Chair?
Yes?
May I, I need to amend this because that, the next one is wrong.
Okay.
The, the GOS notebook is wrong. That's, that should not be there.
So do you want to take that whole section out?
Please.
Okay.
So eliminate that whole point?
No, yeah, that point goes. Project's not located, you can continue that from there. Project's not located within thirteen hundred and twenty feet of any deer, wind, or yard identified by the Department of Fish, Fish and Wildlife, and no portions of the project.
So those two remain the same?
Those remain.
Okay, so we're just removing that whole, whole point.
Yeah.
Okay. Eleven point nine, conformance with the comprehensive plan. The project is in conformance with the two thousand sixteen comprehensive plan for the R one district. Eleven point ten, financial and technical ability. The applicant has provided adequate evidence of technical and financial capability to complete the project. No common or municipal infrastructure will be installed as a proposed project. Eleven point eleven, impact on water quality or shoreline. The project is not located in the watershed of Brimstone Pond and therefore exempt from the standards of eleven point eleven. Eleven point twelve, impact upon groundwater quality. The applicant has prepared a groundwater impact study prepared by Sebago Technics that documents that the proposed subdivision will not increase NO three dash and concentrations above five, is that milligrams?
Yep.
Okay.
Per liter.
Per liter at the property line. The property, the Planning Board has determined that the proposed project will not have a detrimental impact upon groundwater quality, will not have a detrimental impact upon groundwater quality, given the existing?
Yep, soils.
Okay, so you need that, that's just a title. Soils and the location of onsite septic systems. Eleven point thirteen, floodplain management. Project is not located in any FEMA identified under here floodplain. Eleven point fourteen, freshwater wetlands. The applicant has identified all freshwater wetlands on the project site and has designed the project to have minimal impact upon these resources. The applicant will maintain a seventy-five foot DEP buffer and a fifty-foot stream setback on site streams. Existing wetlands on the site are not shoreline zone qualified wetlands, however, the impact to these wetlands consist of driveway crossings on lots one and two, resulting in less than forty-three hundred square feet of wetland filling. And I hate to be an English teacher here, but I think we need another comma after however. Okay. All right. Eleven point fifteen, storm water management. The Planning Board has determined the proposed project will have negligible impact on storm water discharge for the two, comma, five, comma, ten, and twenty-five year frequency storms. Eleven point sixteen, reservation of open space, common lands, fire protection facilities, and private way. There are no common lands to be reserved in this project. Conclusions of the Planning Board. One, the criteria of Title thirty dash A MRS A ordinance four-four oh four have been met. Okay. Two, the standards of the Arundel subdivision regulations have been met. Three, the standards of section five point seven and of the Arundel land use ordinance have been met. Therefore, be it resolved that based on the above findings and conclusions, the Arundel Planning Board hereby approves the final subdivision plan.
Excuse me. There'll be a plan upon, on the Labby subdivision.
Okay. Oh, you have J group? Okay. Your redlining brook.
Oh, yeah, what happened was it printed the long one, this.
Okay. Final subdivision pan, plan of.
Yeah, so that whole thing.
See, the minor.
We gotta revise that.
Okay, so.
So what do we, ten lot subdivision should be taken out of there?
That whole thing should, do you want to just rewrite? But I can't even talk, rewrite that?
Yes, the plan board was, um, that the, the plan board, uh, based on the following findings and facts, the point American, the Arundel Planning Board hereby approves the minor subdivision plan, application from Sean Labby to subdivide three lots on a five point one seven acre parcel, tax map twenty-seven lot eight B located on Camp Ground Road in the R one district.
Just gonna take this thing right here.
So approved by the Arundel Planning Board this tenth day of October two thousand nineteen.
Support that.
Okay, so you'll fix that, Corinne?
So I'm importing the very first whereas.
Correct.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. Number one, the subdivision must be recorded in the York County Registry of Deeds within ninety days of the date upon which the plan is approved and signed by the board, otherwise it shall become null and void. Two, no changes, erasures, modifications, or revisions shall be made in any final plan after approval has been given by the board and endorsed in writing on the plan unless the revised final plan is first submitted and the board approves any modifications. Three, the approval by the board of a subdivision plan shall not be deemed to constitute or be evidence of any acceptance by the municipality of any street easement or other open space shown on such a land. Four, the applicant shall install all soil erosion devices around wetlands and water courses prior to the commencement of construction. I think that's what that Tad was just talking about earlier. Five, failure to complete substantial construction of the subdivision within two years of the date of approval of the plan shall render the plan null and void. Six, the applicant shall include deed restriction on all deeds prohibiting vegetational clearing of wetland areas and of the town fifty-foot stream buffer as delineated on the record subdivision plan.
Can, you have to close a addition to number six in that it's the, the applicant shall include a deed restriction on, on all deeds prohibiting vegetational clearing of wetland areas, not approved on the subdivision plan. And then finish up. So it clarifies that the, the ones that are approved on the plan can be cleared.
Hmm.
The stream process.
Second that.
Drive with crossings. Right, is approved as, as wetland impacts or however, it seems to make sense.
Okay, I think that's a good change. Uh, all, can I have a motion to amend this? Do we need to?
I'll make a motion, amend as needed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Uh, so amended number six. Okay. So approved by the Planning Board this tenth day of October two thousand nineteen.
Yep.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Please, a second?
Second.
All those in favor that we approve this?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No.
So moved.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I like the previous applicant forgot a Mylar, so to get Ted a Mylar.
Let's get it to Ted.
Yep. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You know better than to doubt.
I do. Marty, you gonna tell me to go?
Bye.
Is it Dow or Doe? Is it Doe or Dow?
Doe.
Oh.
Thank you.
Okay. This is Ute and Paul Gadbois.
I used to be.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, K for Arundel. We need to, Joe, we need to schedule a public hearing, but I, do you have something to, that you want to show us?
Yes. This is that added piece of land to be applied.
Right.
Soft blue website. I can read it back if you want. Whoa. Where should we sit? Look for the camera.
Probably up front would be a good spot.
How about, yeah, right over there?
Marty. Not a whole lot to look at, but. Stay with me for a minute.
Table will.
Is that one for everybody? Public can't see it, but. Work for everyone?
Sure.
No, that's all right.
Put it back, that's great.
There.
Okay. Well said. I'm just, Madam Chair and members of the board, Rick Light, Light of Environmental Design, and Joe Povini from the project. We met on a sketch plan meeting in September, and you had a sidewalk on October fifth, which I unfortunately could not make, but I looked in there, but had a commitment. And I believe Joe took you around and showed you both the whole project. And then the, tonight, we just, we are back to formally amend the plan to do the, to add the one acre piece of property that was over by phase four A that, that we talked about in sketch plan meetings. Between that meeting and now, I wanted to bring up two other areas that we'd like to put into our amendment that are sort of administrative, but would be a good idea of a housekeeping item. And I submitted an addition, a supplemental memo to the board, headed October seventh. And what that does is, in addition, this is the one acre piece on the corner of, of phase four, and that we talked about sketch plan, and additionally, I think as we mentioned, we're going to do every phase, uh, there's a process where we take, the subdivision plan establishes unit areas, they're actually not unit, they're unit areas, which are something like thirty-four by thirty-six feet. And subdivision plan has a note that we're able to tweak or move or adjust those to, to, to deal with things in real life, such as ledge, topography, and, and sort of juxtaposition units to make them the final units. You have to create little neighborhoods, as long as the, the units are generally the same and we're not taking them and moving them big distances. And we've been doing that all along, and then what we do is we come up with a, Joe and his team come up, the marketing team, take the unit areas which are just boxes, and we put an actual unit footprint on the ground, and that, it as-built it, and sometimes the units are moved within the box, or within the box, sometimes they move four, five, six feet, usually not far, and we tweak their orientation. So in phase four B, which is over here, because of the, the nature of the, the topography, the way things laid out, we did two things. We took one unit and actually moved it, physically moved unit one eighty-six, because it just felt too tight when we put them on the ground and look at doorways and driveway accesses. And we moved it over here, and then the other units we, we included in here, they're all tweaked a little more than we usually do, maybe, some of them are maybe ten, fifteen feet, just because of the nature and the way things laid out, and we're trying to make a nice, really nice serpentine layout, so as you drive in, there's sort of a, called coving effect, and it, and it worked out really nicely. And so some units have longer driveways and anticipated, but all, all, all in all, it's just sort of trying to create a little neighborhood community. So, one hundred foot view, we haven't really done anything. But we thought for the purpose of, of, we're going to do a plan amendment in case there's any question about where the units are when Wendy Lang does her E nine one one, we ought to memorialize this as a formal amendment, just saying, these are the actual locations, there's no question. Especially if we look to unit one eighty-six, we've actually moved over to a space over here, that would be a problem if that wasn't on the plan, Wendy would go to do the E nine one one and say, wait a minute, I bet, you know, I got one extra unit on the side of the road. The other small minor amendment, again administratively, we thought we should, we should just sort of lean to some housekeeping, is our communications consultant has recommended and required that we put a small utility building, a twelve by fourteen utility building at the end of four A on Patriots, and where that is on the plan relative to the rest of the project, sort of, you know, the big picture here. This is the utility building, the one acre addition, this is the area four B I just pointed to. This communications building is necessary to service all of phase five and, and four B, so if we're obligated to put that small twelve by fourteen on slab building in, it'll look just like the gatehouse as you came in, in fact, it is the same building as the gatehouse. So, again, to memorialize that and just to be, it's a housekeeping item, we asked board to approve all three of those items formally, and they're all shown on the amended subdivision plan. It's the fourth supplemental subdivision plan, which was, we submitted hard copies to Tad, and we have a Mylar here tonight, if we're in a position to approve, or if we have to have a public hearing.
Public hearing. Do we have a public hearing before?
Well, we have to have a, we need a public hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think, I don't think we need another sidewalk, do we?
No, 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 no.
You choose the sidewalks.
So, um, so you'll add those changes to your amended application? And what's the protocol, Ted?
He already has.
Oh, he already has?
Yep, we already got, blew a memo.
They came in after, after your packets went out, they came in on Monday. I was at a conference on Monday, so I got them, I didn't get them until Tuesday, and I've got them right here to give to you all.
So that would be part of the public hearing?
That would be part of the.
Yes.
Okay, so it's already there.
Assuming that you accept that as an amendment to the plan.
Yeah.
So we need two weeks to schedule a public hearing, is that right?
That would be part of the public.
Yes.
Okay, so it's already there.
Assuming that you accept that as an amendment to the plan.
So we need two weeks to schedule a public hearing, is that right?
I don't know how long we need to do it, because I don't have a place to, to.
The general post, so there's no place to advertise.
Yeah, I have an advertising issue.
Yeah, they stopped publishing the twelve.
They stopped publishing.
Yeah, they stopped the twelve.
This room.
So what are you going to do, Ted?
It's a real thing, after one hundred and thirty-five years.
Probably go to the post, because we don't have to do a weekly for subdivision. We have to do it for something else.
And it has to be printed?
Yeah.
It can't be online? Didn't they go online? Aren't they going to do an online? Oh, they closed altogether.
Yeah, we can't go to the post. It's usually a week before. Luckily, it was seven days instead of fourteen days.
So when can we get them on the schedule?
If you, I will get them on as soon as I can get it published in a paper.
Perfect.
In a paper.
Perfect, because I think the second, the second Thursday of November, you've got a meeting on the twenty-fourth, and then you've got a meeting on, what, November seventh?
Yeah, we're going to.
Is it possible to make the meeting to the twenty-fourth? There's not enough time.
On the twenty-fourth of this month?
In October, same two weeks.
October, October.
Yeah, you said November. I said, yeah, I can make it in November.
Yeah.
We're not going to be meeting on the twenty-fourth in November.
Right, no, but the seventh we are.
Are you going to be meeting, is it possible to make the meeting?
Are we meeting on the?
November, yeah.
November seventh.
I'll see if we can get, I'll, I'll see if I can get it on the next meeting.
The twenty-fourth, if it's possible.
Yeah. So I have a quick question.
Sure.
It really doesn't pertain to anything, I'm just curious. So it looks like in this new phase that the houses are actually closed. First of all, I thought it was a very well-done project, and I was very impressed to drive around and see everything. It's quite attractive. Is the, are the houses closer, closer together? And, because they, in the earliest phases, it really looks like they've been laid out. Is everything pretty much the same throughout?
Pretty much the same. And when you, the drawings that we submitted, you know, mid-course, before this meeting, when Ted passes those out, you'll see, there's actually a shadow we called out on the plan. Our surveyor, Liam Blunt from Lower Village, has gone and just, he's taken the footprint of the actual unit, so you can look at the shadow of the actual unit versus the dark box that, or the light, the dark is the actual unit, and then the box that was approved is underneath of the shadow. So versus here, they're all very close, there's a couple here that maybe they stepped right out of their box a little bit, but all within the same general area, but you can actually look at the plan and say, oh, we've moved this unit about fifteen feet, that sort of thing.
They just, you know, visually on, on your little, where they look a little closer.
When these, when these units are sold, is there, is there any kind of meets and bounds that are?
There's an as-built that goes into the condominium blocks. So they, they locate them, surveyor, they're located by the contractor based on our, our G I, our, our G P F location. So they, the surveyor, Lower Village Survey, locates each foundation for the purpose of instantiating a condo flat. So each condo flat has, is sections of the condo flat are declared out, obviously to Joe's, you know, benefit. If they can do two or three or four closings, do it one time, you know, try not to do them individually, but as they declare out sections of the condo flat, they're located, you know, exactly.
And then that is what accompanies the, say, the deed.
Correct.
Oh, correct.
But essentially, the reality is with today's technology, as you know, that where most is cleared, where the foundation is shown on the design plan, they end up with an, with an initial, you know, yeah.
So will you coordinate with Ted in terms of timing for the twenty-fourth, if he can get you on there?
That'd be great.
Okay.
Do you guys need to vote on, to schedule that?
Yes, I need a motion to.
Game motion.
I'm moving right along, so could you, so Marty, will you make a motion?
I did.
Yeah. A second?
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Yeah.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay.
That's a, for the matter, public hearing, Joe.
Yes.
Yep.
That was a public hearing.
That was the public hearing.
But I just, it didn't say exactly public hearing.
Don't worry, I'm on it.
Just to keep, just to keep the board identified and moving along, we'll be submitting a full, the full amendment also sometime in the next, very short period. We're meeting with EDP next weekend, and that'll come in, so we'll be hopscotching.
Don't we need a public hearing on that note?
Yeah.
It'd be separate.
Separate.
Yeah, I thought you had that tonight.
I wish, I wish, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Does the board have any, excuse me, I feel the chair.
Yeah.
Does the board have any questions or issues they wanted the applicant to be aware of prior to, from, as a result of the sidewalk prior to their submission of the, of the school?
Um, I didn't. Does anyone have any?
I didn't either.
We could ask for it. Great, you guys have been doing a great job.
So I think the answer is no.
Okay, so we're going to give the, the heads up, you feel any changes?
Uh, no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gadboys?
Just wanted to make sure.
Move it back. Move it back there. There you go. That was your boy.
Locks you totally back, give me some color.
Oh, that's right, pretty.
Are you ready to go?
Are you?
You're ready.
Not sure. My pop, you have more hits. And Chris Cope is here this evening with Alfric Association, and he probably on the menu is also here this evening. We're here in front of the board to get a special exemption to reduce the buffer from fifty feet to twenty-five feet on two of these lots. Then they're owned three lots, these are single lots of record, and they're shown on the tax map as lots fourteen A, and fourteen A, fourteen B, and sixteen. Maybe some of the existing ground, well, actually it's been constructed all the way around the cul-de-sac, all of the cul-de-sac hasn't been used in several years, the trees are going back in. The last house is here, which is the Paul residence, so there's no one been traveling this area, no one been maintaining that portion of the cul-de-sac. The project has received a D E P and M P approval, which is, have impacted. In the course of the project, also the project has been solar tethered, so the sites do have active source for septic, and Chris can talk about that if we need to. Also, there's an existing name screening effect for the slipper, whose lots will be part of that minutes agreement. The applicant actually owns a slipper in feet. Just to kind of give some facts on the project. We did look at the surrounding wetlands. The wetland was found less than ten acres in size, therefore, we're dealing with a two-to-five acre wetland, which requires a hundred-foot setback as the shoreline zone setback line. And so, looking at these wetlands, this yellow, if you try to look at the shoreline zone setback from this major wetland, that would be the shoreline zone setback. And this setback from these wetlands aren't shoreline zone setback, because we, the hundred by hundred-foot rule says you cut them off, so this portion of the wetland isn't part of the hundred-foot setback requirement. So this, this lot here, which is lot fourteen B, the critical thing was a vernon pool that was found on the property. It wasn't a significant vernon pool, I think it had four heckmasts. It's man-made, and it wasn't D E P significant vernon pool, but however, when you go for wetland to an application to the core, they don't really care. So in the process of getting approvals to the core, we maintain a hundred-foot, no disturb zone within that man-made vernon pool, so you can see that hundred-foot circle right here, and no clearing whatsoever, but in that circle is allowed. For this lot, we actually only need reduction for the buffer, because we're not, we're in a shoreline zone setback area. So then we're looking at lot sixteen. We tried to minimize the driveway crossing, and there was a point of the wetland, we gave the wetland fill permit. We didn't bring this house back so we could structure back in this area, which kind of gives the widest possible building envelope, so we'd clear around it. Obviously, if I could buy it closer and made it work, I would have tried to do that. What we're asking for is, because this wetland again is over two acres, because it goes off-site, that would be a hundred-foot setback shoreline setback line from that wetland. And we're asking for a twenty-five-foot non-disturbed buffer from that wetlands in order to get a driveway and, and some sort of clearing around this potential home, basically just for clearing a, a lawn here in that area. This lot, same thing, we have to minimize the wetland crossings, so we use an upland island and upland island to get to a buildable area on the property. Just the hundred-foot setback line from this wetlands, we are clearing up to fifty feet from that, so we don't need, not asking for restriction above here, we are to maintain fifty-foot setback. However, from, at this point right here, I am asking for a reduction, again, from the wetland edge here, this, again, this is over two acre wetland, this, from this point, this is my hundred-foot shoreline zone line. I'm asking to reduce the buffer down to twenty-five in order to be able to handle a turnaround, and have some clearing around the proposed building area. That being said, obviously, we need any permits required if they come through the shoreline zone for these wetland crosses to get to our buildable area. And, oh, we are upgrading the road, so we're going to do some major approvals to the road. We're going to put in several cross culverts, catch a water shed. This is an existing culvert, we're adding a new culvert, new culvert, catch a water shed for these existing driveway, two, two driveways, catching the lower area between these two driveways, placing new culvert under our driveway to drain around the wetland. And we're upgrading the road from the main road, oh, there on the cul-de-sac, to the private standards. Actually, they're a little bit better than the private standards. And I'd be glad to answer any questions the board might have. For me, or Chris, or Linda. Out of the way.
So, the only exemption you're looking for for setbacks is in that lower left?
I remember essentially in.
Lot sixteen is, well.
That's that hatched, I don't know what you call that hatched area. It's over here, pose wetland buffer. So this wetland here, again, is a hundred-foot setback, or a hundred-foot shoreline zone, it's a fifty-foot buffer requirement, setback requirement, and again, to this planning board, we get a special exemption, get it down to twenty-five.
With that cleared area, is that upland? The words all, like.
It's all upland. Yes.
That's all upland?
Yes.
So the, so the red line is the hundred-foot.
Hundred-foot from this direction. Yes.
That has a fifty-foot.
Over the shoreline zone.
Okay.
That has a fifty-foot buffer requirement, with the exception that the planning board can't bring it down to twenty-five. And, you know, quite frankly, I probably, if there's a new subdivision, you know, probably we'll be acting to the special exemption, but these are existing.
And that was my question.
These are existing lots of record.
Those lots are already approved.
Correct.
Yeah, these are, this was never a subdivision.
No.
From what I could find. This is just a.
Yeah, he, he was purchased, like, right down the middle, he bought this section from someone, and he bought this section from someone, and he put the road right down the middle of the two purchases, and then it was family transfer, it was many, many years back, and so, they both subdivision, that's correct.
Utilities, are they above ground, or they've?
These are all above ground, utilities, and a pole here.
Oh, yeah, the new ones. Because of, of the crossings and everything else, you're going to turn on all poles?
All, oh, that'll be at the bar where you want the poles on the ground.
Well, that's why you just, just acquire them.
So are we, are we?
Right in the way.
Are we hearing from Bob or Linda on this?
You can hear from Linda if you'd like to.
I'm teasing, it just was funny that he brought, he brought it up to Bob. I'm like, Linda's right.
Oh, Linda's the problem.
I looked over for the reaction, too.
I thought it was odd.
He's in bed by now, so.
Through, through the chair? The board should be aware that because this is, was not a subdivision, that actually the jurisdiction for the approval of the road improvements falls to the staff review committee.
Excuse me?
Because this is not a subdivision, and this is less than ten lots, the jurisdiction for the improvements to this goes to the staff review committee. So the application, as shown on the, on the, on the agenda, is strictly for shoreline zone improvement.
Right.
So.
The, the road portion.
The road portion.
Road portion.
The road portion is staff review. We'll schedule that as soon as we get some idea where the planning board's going.
So, obviously, we need to schedule a sidewalk.
Yeah.
So, and I think it would be nice to have, obviously, you'll be there. I would be nice to have Chris be there.
Yeah.
And just, you know, get a visual of what exactly we're talking about.
It's easier to get a visual than that, than be walking around those woods, but anyways.
Well, I mean.
Is this all still woods, or is this just on paper?
It's all woods.
It's all woods.
So there hasn't been a stake or?
Well, he's got it all, it's all surveyed out.
Yeah. It's all been flagged, the wetland boundary all flagged, the flags are still.
Been flagged off, 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 off-site, too?
We didn't flag off-site, no.
Okay.
No, we just located off-site, walked it, determined it wasn't, we don't flag off-site.
Well, it's just, well, it's your land that's next door, right?
Back of it, yeah.
Yeah, the back of it. So, I mean, just, the, the planning board wants verification, yeah. Oh, that's still. Yeah. So you didn't flag off-site.
No, I wouldn't let him over there.
Now, we walked it in GPS.
Yeah, on GPS, yeah.
Yeah, I don't flag off-site.
So these, these lots, since they weren't a part of subdivision, have just been divided out via whatever.
Gift to families, this, this.
But they're, they're legally existing lots today?
Correct.
There are lots of record.
Yeah.
Which, you're right, does make a difference, because it would new subdivision.
Then obviously, I would try to meet all the current standards, but.
But they're already there.
These are existing, and that's why I figure the planning board, if they can have anything, these lots should qualify for the special exemption, because you guys changed the rules that, after these, after these lots were created.
And Ted, it's a, so it's, the, the zone is a hundred-foot zone with a fifty-foot building setback? It depends on what the, this is the one, if you recall, that we had a variable setback based on what the type of wetland potentially impacted was. You had a hundred foot for emergent marsh, you'd go down to fifty foot for shrub, and then you go down to, you, it's fifty foot for any other. Hundred for emergent marsh in open water, fifty foot for any other type, you know, the shrubs, shrub swamp, you know, scrub scrub, or.
Forested.
Or forested. And the planning board has an ability to make a special exception to reduce it down to twenty-five, no less than twenty-five, if, if it is a shrub, scrub, or a forested wetland, and conditions would warrant it. It's not particularly special, there's nothing unusual about it, and any other mitigating circumstances. So it's not something you want to do all the time, but I would think it immediately is, is eligible, because the existing lot, and I think the planning board needs to go and take a look at site conditions to determine, you know, whether it has value or not that requires a fifty-foot setback. That's what the sidewalk would be important for. I was hoping to do it today, but never got a chance. Go out myself, but.
So what do you suggest?
Safe.
Well, I agree.
We'll go out and take a look.
So do it in, try to do it on a Saturday morning?
Probably have to, because we're losing daylight.
You probably need boots.
Yeah, I'd wear muck boots.
Maybe we won't need mosquito spray, Roger.
Yeah, but you don't want your police, so maybe we will.
So when can you, when do you think we could get a sidewalk in?
As soon as you want.
Twenty-sixth?
Twenty-sixth.
That's a story. I will not be available the twenty-sixth.
I'm not going to be here either, but what about the rest of the board?
I don't know, like, rest of all any charting? I don't know, my rest of the board, any charting?
Well, I'm sure they'd like to get us out there so they can at least do something.
Really, we're going to get out there and see.
Well, that's just, if there's, if it's possible, because the next meeting is the twenty-fourth, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
What's, what's wrong with the nineteenth?
Because it's dry now, and we'd like to start cutting as soon as possible because we're dry. So if we could figure out, so we could have it done by the next meeting, that would be great.
Can you do the nineteenth?
I could probably do the nineteenth.
I'm out.
The twentieth?
That's a Sunday?
That's a Sunday.
I'm available the nineteenth.
I know I can't give it to twenty. What about, we need, you need four, at least four people.
Do I have to be on a weekend?
What time does it start during the week?
Do a weekday, but you'd have to do it while you're still at like.
First thing in the morning? Probably only need an hour.
Yeah. You could do it early in the morning, you could do it in the afternoon.
Is that thirty-eight in the morning?
So sixteen is the lot that everybody, isn't that the one that is? I know there are two, but sixteen.
Sixteen and fourteen B.
And fourteen B.
So this is sixteen, that's correct.
Fourteen A.
Well, let's see, what do we got? I mean, if the, if board members can get out of work early, five or something, you could do it at five, well, stop daylight at five.
On, on Thursday, which what?
No, no, do it, do some.
Yeah, we're losing daylight quick.
We're losing daylight very rapidly, so as soon as, as soon as we could.
Five o'clock, that's in November.
Five o'clock.
Yeah, it switches November fourth, so.
Where are we, to November?
No, 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 I'm saying.
The twenty-fourth is the meeting.
Next week, I mean, we'd be looking at the, at what, the fifteenth, the sixteenth, the seventeenth?
What do you, what do you need for notice?
How about eighteen?
I could do notice in, I could do a notice for sidewalk.
I never made it to California before, so now I'm going this, I'll be gone for like.
Oh, you don't live in California, they don't get any power out there.
I know, the city is still powered though. San Francisco still has power.
We're looking at the nineteenth.
San Mateo doesn't though.
Is that out?
No, all of them are in.
No.
So the nineteenth, that means not enough people?
Well, I mean, how, how do, how do we do a raising hands?
Yes.
Yeah, let's do that. We'll connect the nineteenth.
How about the, wait a minute, what about the week of the fourteenth? Can anybody make it the week of the fourteenth at five o'clock? Doesn't matter a thumb not here, but if we have four people that can make it.
The week of the fourteenth is.
Next week, I thought at some point.
Yeah, the fifteenth, the sixteenth, seventeenth, why the eighteenth? Fourteenth is indigenous peoples.
Because otherwise, it's like you're in November. Yeah.
Yeah.
How about Thursday evening, the seventeenth?
I can't do that.
How many can?
I can't get out.
So we could do it at, uh.
So you need four.
I could do, I could do that Thursday.
Um, so two, Thursday to seventeenth? Not maybe. So that's three. And what about Rich?
So that's really whether Rich or not is present.
Or you need four.
Rich is out the whole month, isn't he?
I think he's in and out, is maybe.
He's in and out. He'll be, he's, he'll hopefully be on then.
Jamie, can you make it? The seventeenth, so, and Marty, you can't get out for five o'clock?
I got people coming in and out all the time.
Do you have, do we have an alternative day? About taking a backup?
How about the fifteenth?
Tuesday.
Wednesday, the sixteenth.
Let's go to fifteen. How about the fifteenth, that's Tuesday?
That's Tuesday, that's this coming Tuesday. Gives me just enough time to advertise.
No, I cannot.
No.
So you have to advertise for a sidewalk?
Yeah.
Yes.
Sixteenth, which is Wednesday, how about Wednesday? Do I hear Friday? Yeah, that'll be popular. How about Friday? It's good to, I think way to end a week.
Sixteenth, can we say sixteen?
Friday is the eighteenth, right?
No?
No, sixty, I want to say.
This is.
How about the twenty-first?
So should we see if Rich is going to be back that week, maybe he?
He's not, he's in Hawaii.
Oh, he's in Hawaii?
Twenty-first, anybody?
Twenty-first, I don't foresee anything huge on the twenty-first for me.
Okay.
No, you back soon?
I'm not back yet, but I'm back right before the meeting on the twenty-fourth, but if you can get four people, you're good.
I can do the twenty-first.
Would you?
You're out the twenty-first, huh?
Yeah. Twenty-second?
Twenty-second, I can do it.
Twenty-second, Jamie?
I should be able to do that.
Roger, the twenty-second?
The Tuesday.
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay, so that's.
Three?
No, they have four, they have Jens, Roger, Tom, and James.
Potentially.
Twenty-second.
At five.
Rich.
I don't know if he'll be back.
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second, five.
What day is that?
It's a Tuesday.
That's a Tuesday.
October twenty-second, looking good.
All right, so the wetlands are all flagged.
Okay.
I don't believe I need to go and try to stake out a billing envelope for the buildings. We have wetlands all flagged on this property, certainly the county is showing where we're crossing the driveway. I don't have to go out there and lay out the release for that, because that's part of the work. Particularly it's all flagged. All flagged, wetlands, flagged, flagged, it's all flagged, so you can walk right out there to the islands and get a visual of it.
All right, twenty-second then.
We need an official motion and second then.
Yes.
I move to hold the sidewalk on the twenty-second at five o'clock.
I'll second.
Go ahead. Yep, I got it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does it, does it need to be a public hearing for this as well?
Yeah, afterward.
Is it possible to have that scheduled for?
Well, the twenty-fourth is a meeting.
Yeah, it's right on there.
Can we, we could make it.
Could I do it before?
Well, the next meeting is the twenty-fourth.
Right.
So can they get on the schedule for a public?
Well, it's all up to you guys.
Is there anything?
Do you want to have a public hearing on the twenty-fourth?
Yes, in essence, is there anything preventing us from saying if we go on the sidewalk?
No, you can have a public hearing.
And we want a public hearing, then you would have the meeting on the twenty-fourth, things would be moving.
So I would like to be able to finish up on the twenty-fourth, if that's all possible.
I, I'm fine with that.
Why do you say that?
Because I'll be here. I'm in the meeting.
I'm fine.
Okay. Yes, somebody move the.
I made the motion, we hold the public hearing on.
The twenty-fourth?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Nay, nobody's opposed?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right, good.
We're going at a clip.
Well, no, I'm getting that calendar, I'm loading it up for you guys.
Okay. Kimball's gravel? Yes.
My name is Chip Lake, I'm the Agri Resource Manager for Sargent Corporation out of Stillwater. I had a request to renew the conditional use permit for mineral extraction. These are the site plans we submitted years ago. Located off one eleven on Thompson Road. It's in an I four district and owned by John Diana Kimball, seventy-eight acres total. We originally received approval back in nineteen ninety-one for a five acre mineral extraction. And we've been back every three years since then. Terminated by the Maine DEP and they, they do regular compliance inspections as well. We use the pit on an intermittent basis when we have projects in the area. Unfortunately, we haven't had much locally, so we haven't had an opportunity to use it very much in the last number of years. But we have used it for stockpile, putting material there and taking out for various projects. It's compatible to similar and general categories of uses, the neighboring properties. Been consistent, consistently permitted for twenty-eight years. Consistent with the comprehensive plan. Safe vehicle access, no water supply is needed, used porta potties for sewer disposal. Minimal noise, dust, and odor vibration and smoke generated. We all follow the Maine DEP regulations, OSHA, and we're heavily regulated by the Mine Safety and Health Administration. Physical characteristics of the site, including location, side slopes, drainage, suitable for the proposed use, it's internally drained. We have historically met performance standards provided by Maine DEP and the town of Rundle. We have a performance bond of fifty thousand dollars in place. Will not constitute a, a, a public or private nuisance, meet all other requirements. So we're more than happy to answer any questions. Also probably request that we waive the sidewalk.
One question, how much have the trees grown in the last two years?
Quite good, they're, they're pretty good.
I mean, because when it passed, when there was a question of, for buffering.
Yeah.
And over the three-year period, they have blended in.
Very well. Well, last, last time we were here, the planning board, we, we had a, we had a, a forested buffer here. Required to plant some trees, so we immediately, I think it was within, within less than a month after the, we had received approval. We planted the trees, put the berm up, it's taken up very well. So, you know, more than happy to, to go up short to everybody again, or whatever you'd like.
So do we need another sidewalk?
I've been out there myself and walked the grounds and the trees are doing, the buffer's doing terrific. All there are are piles of material that are there, there's been no excavation, I could see only deposition. There are piles there waiting to move out. They've been there for a while, you've got sweet fern growing.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, so they've been there for quite a while now, but, but there's been no change to the contours, except for those piles, which will eventually be ruled because it's material.
That doesn't, that doesn't strike me as.
It's, I would recommend not to.
So is there anything more that we need to do?
I would recommend, what I would recommend you do is the board should determine the application, waive the site plan and schedule a public hearing.
I make the motion and we set a complete, application complete.
I'll second that.
And waive the site plan.
And waive the site plan.
And waive the sidewalk.
And schedule a, a public hearing.
Yay.
Okay, do I have a second? There are, okay, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay.
Not much.
Can we get him on the public hearing for the twenty-fourth?
The board can, of course it can.
So I think if we can reschedule you for the twenty-fourth, so you can get on.
Perfect.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Yeah. Okay, did you? No, we're gonna, I, we have to move that, correct?
Yes.
Okay, can I have a motion that we?
Can we have a sidewalk?
No. No, no sidewalk. We're gonna put them on the twenty-fourth.
Yes.
Okay.
Public hearing, yes.
Second? Second?
Tom did.
Second, all those in favor?
Yay.
Okay, anyone opposed? Okay, you're on.
Great, thank you very much.
You're on.
Okay, see you in a few weeks.
Hardscrabble.
I'm Steve Toddard, we're, we're with Phil Mark. We've put in a application for a conditional use permit for compost stacking sites. We've total of four of them. We've got one, we've been composting for about ten years at the, the site down the road here on the pad. So with a strategic, strategic standpoint, we need more stacking sites around the farm, yeah, in support of our nutrient management plan that you folks have. And Tad has a full copy and parcel copies went to the rest of the board due to this, due to the size of the document, it's over a hundred pages. I believe we've submitted everything that was required. And we're open to, to questions. And Tad, I, I did submit the email a few days ago, some more documentation from the state. The State Department of Agriculture has done a, a site visit and inspected all of the sites, tested all of the site, proposed sites, and approved them all, so.
So I have a question, so the exact nutrient deficiencies have been determined for you by the USDA NRCS, right?
That's correct.
And the acceptable application rates, same thing. So what's, what's not specified is actually the volume of these materials, is that correct?
The volume, to be stacked or applied to the fields?
Right.
Uh, Mark, would you like to speak to that?
Well, a long time ago, grandfather says, how much we should put down in fields? He says, well, when you get back to the pile and there's none left, you've already did half the field, you can put enough down. But we, we have a volume tally, but we always run out. And we're trying to increase the volume so we can cover all the hay fields and patches for nutrition. Right now, we're not getting enough down, we do probably one-third to one-half a year when we do increase the volume. So we don't use chemical fertilizers, we're using natural fertilizer, synthetic, or what tables run off.
So I have a few questions, being new to farming. And so I would like to have seen a little more specificity. So what I would say is I'd like to know how big the yards are, what's the approximate area that you think you're going to be covering? How often you're planning on, you know, disseminating all this material and compost? And whether or not all this material is being generated from your particular operation? Or are you planning on, you know, importing material? And if so, what kind of material? And so I'd sort of like to know a little more in the way of specifics.
We've been importing stuff for ten years now, according to what we need for materials. Three parts carbon, nitrogen, three parts carbon and one part nitrogen, so we've adjusted carburetor, so to speak, what comes in. A lot of the stuff that's generated in the farm, obviously, has gotten started with manure bedding, garden waste, so we do take manscapers, lawn clippings. And bulk cleanups for leaves or gaben. Any nutrients we can to apply to the area. The stacking areas on the lot is probably maybe a hundred yards, and it's very small, we can see some of the living growth, they swell. The stuff is spread, assuming it can apply to the fields, which is probably two or three times a year. Before frost, in the spring, and between crops.
So is there need for any kind of specifics in the, in the application itself? In terms of the number of, you know, applications, the kind of materials that are being put down? How many amendments they can, or what kind of amendments they can bring in from outside? And so on and so forth?
The, if any, if the compost is produced from material on the site, then there is no need for a permit. But if, if it's residuals, which means it's material that's produced from offsite, it's considered by our ordinance to be solid waste. And therefore, it needs a permit for spreading. It's called ergonomic utilization in our ordinance. And it's called for residuals, and residuals being things that are not created on, on the site. And materials that are not usually associated with what's being done on the site. So it would be non, non, non cattle, you could example on it. And you, you, you've told, you've told us that you want to use seafood renderings, right? And that would be considered residual.
That's for the nitrogen to pick up the carbon, right?
So how much of, I guess the question you're asking is how much of that is going to be imported?
Probably, I mean, we can't, really can't tell, probably ten percent per year of it. The DEP has given these people that want to get rid of it, our name, because we've been approved from it. Maine Department, Mark Hendrick, Mark King has given approval, which has been on site visits. We get now standing farm that needs nutrition to pick it up. The Maine, Plant for Maine's Future has come down, taken soil samples with other organizations, said the same thing. We reached the minimum requirement to bedrock, which is twenty-four inches, the soils are suitable for a class A farm.
Okay, but how much material are you going to import? That's the question.
Ten percent?
Of what?
Of what?
Of what?
And is it, what kind of seafood waste?
Lost, the shells.
Lost the shell.
Sometimes.
Racks, fish racks?
What's that?
Fish racks?
No, not usually. Clam shells with calcium pick up on the soils, whatever I feel I need on the soil, this is my plant for the nutrition plant, we pick up, or we can pick up what we need for calcium, hydrogen.
So I, I have one question about the nomenclature. The use of the word stacking, does that mean where it's put, prefatory to being spread? Or is the stacking, the actual spreading on the field?
Stacking areas, when the product comes in, it's got to be cured, I got a thermometer and I have to read the temperature for so many, flip it. And once the stuff is suitable for soils, it goes from stacking area into manure spreader and gets spread on the fields.
So it, does it, does it have to break down?
Of course.
And, and, and as you know, if the temperature goes up, is it breaking down?
Yes.
I see, okay.
There's a job right here of the finished product, I'll pass that to.
Yeah.
Anybody want? That's the finished product in the order, yes.
So is there a limit as to how much you can import?
Because it's, we don't know what, it's ten percent of what?
It's up to our board, I mean, you know, the issue, the, the stick. It's up to the board. I mean, you know, the issue, the sticky issue is composting. Composting, uh. Our ordinance says that you, if you produce it on the farm, you can compost it and you don't need permits. If you don't, then you do, do need permits.
But is there?
If you're a composting operation, the problem is that, that if they're going to be producing large amounts of composting, that is a solid waste issue. And, and for us in our ordinance, that's the problem.
So Mark would have to get a permit in order to bring in the solid waste to augment his compost that he's going to be using in his field?
Is that why I'm here tonight, I think?
So the question is, does it, once you get the permit, he would have to say how much he would be importing, is that correct?
Well.
Ten percent is kind of a neb- nebulous number, cause it could be, I don't know, ten percent of what?
It's like asking a, a value that changes oil, how many gallons of, um, recycled oil you take, like, you don't know how many cows you, we just don't know that. You, you bring in what you can, and when you get enough, you stop, you spread, and you regroup and do it again.
So I, I mean, I understand that farming is not a perfect science, and I certainly don't know as much about farming as I hope to learn, but I just hate to leave, it's sort of like we've had other discussions about leaving things open-ended. Not that you're not going to be a good steward of the land, but somebody else down the road may, uh, push the envelope a lot more than you are. And so consequently, if we don't ask you to, you know, sort of, uh, march to the same drum that we want everybody else to march to, and we don't ask you to be somewhat specific, then we potentially get ourselves in hot water down the road. So.
Incorrect, oh, correct. Mark Hendrick, the DEP, said I was allowed to, uh, if I sold, I'm bringing sixty, sixty-two yards per month for a site. And he says if you don't sell it, you're unlimited to feed your land as much as you feel. That's what.
With outside material?
Yes.
Okay.
Imported.
So.
Imported.
And perhaps this is redundant, but, so the ten percent number that you're talking about.
I just said that, cause I'm just figuring if I make a hundred yards, I can bring in ten to sell. So, uh, just, that was just a guess.
Okay, so ten percent of the total stuff that would be spread would be the seafood stuff?
At, at this guess, at this guessing time.
Okay.
So that which means ninety percent of the other i- is going to be farm-generated.
So it's a.
But I, again, she ends, I don't want to go into that, I'm just shooting off the hip. I don't want to be pinned to that right now.
So one, uh, one other thing.
Cause it'd probably be higher than that now I do my figures with the sixty-two yards.
Obviously, we want your, your, your farms to succeed, and we understand the need for you to do what you want to do.
How do you, uh?
What do you think about fending off complaints about, uh, odor produced? Given that, I mean, your farms, the farm, the farm properties that you're operating have been farms for a long time. They're not new, but now we've got residential that's come essentially, uh, into the area and has developed. So it's gonna be something.
Well, again, we've done this for ten years. We had very little complaints. Uh, Richard Benon said he went down the mountain road many times, and then he had a compost facility there on the mountain road. Uh, we take everything serious. Uh, I talked to a group, make it, it may be it today, he says, um, sometimes I make a bad batch. We talked, Dom Keppe was this week, he said sometimes I make great surprises. Much as, we do make mistakes, but it's not awful. You know, we, we, we take care of it. We don't see much of those that bump, you know, uh, fly, attack down, just down, mistake, went down, put fly tapes around my facilities to see what the fly content is picking up, and we were way, way lost games. I think I need to be given a fair try, and then if we fail, then, then that can be done.
So, so Mark sort of related to that, in your comment about Rick, you know, with three, you know.
Oh, what?
Your facility, your Rick, your, your mountain road.
Yeah.
Facility, in that, you know, drive up and down there, you know, numerous occasions, and really never noticed much, but I know going down the Limerick Road recently, when you get to that spot right there, it has been a, a very, very pungent odor, you know, unusual, you know, historically there. What, what's been part of that?
It wasn't historically, cause I got, uh, two complaints about a month ago after somebody didn't show up in the hay field to help me, I had to go home, and Ted had two crops, great bale, go back, but by telling me the fact, I forgot, so I didn't get back till next morning, so that was, you know, everybody, historically speaking, most people come by, love what we're doing, so.
Well, that's what I'm saying. So what was, what was, what was the reason for?
I didn't have time to flip it, cause I didn't, I didn't want to lose, when shells is coming, I didn't want to lose twenty-four big bales, say, hey, and then went down, when I get down, I get done, I can get back there tomorrow, so, and, uh, didn't get fixed.
Did, okay.
Yeah. I went around to make one, apologized, and I believe this.
So there was, there was an, so there's an explanation as to that particular event?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think.
You know why it happened, and.
What's that?
You know why it happened, and you, you could explain why.
No, I went around to make one, apologized, and they all.
Yeah, I mean, I think unless a problem becomes chronic, I don't think anybody is gonna hold your feet to the fire, but.
You need to have three pots carb and one pot nitrogen. By the time I left, it's probably one and one, but I didn't want to lose the hay crop, I thought I had backup help, they didn't come in, and then, of course, was it a warm night or something? It was a warm night. And then it just, humid, yeah. We did get some complaints from residents, a handful, quite, actually, quite a few complaints.
Oh, yeah, I would imagine. Cause I re- I remember one of the nights it, where the smell was pretty pervasive. I don't know, it must've been the way the wind was blowing, as, as you came almost back over to the turnpike and you could still.
I could smell it.
Smell it and, you know. Um, Tad, how does this fit in to our, uh, permitted and conditional use, uh, tables or, or?
Well, the code enforcement officer reminded me that, that agronomic utilization, which means applying residual finished product, requires a permit from you guys. Um, however, composting, uh, raw material that's not produced in the farm is now, is, is only allowed in districts where solid waste production is permitted. That's, that's the only thing. So if, if they're doing, instead of just importing finished residuals, which would be just.
Right.
Applying finished product that, that contains the residuals, that would be something you guys could give, but the solid waste thing is, is, is a little more problematic. If they're going to be doing composting, stuff that's not produced there, especially the nitrogen, and that's where it starts bordering on the, the solid waste issue.
And I guess what I was thinking is maybe I'm just trying to codify it in a way that it, it goes beyond you guys. So that when the next person comes down the road, we have this, established a standard to go by, not just, uh, you know, uh, when we reach this point, it gets a little smelly, or we have to do more this year, you know, maybe not to exceed a certain percentage, or in relation to the amount of your, you know, the compost that you have on your, I don't know what the answer is. But I, I do think it helps us to codify it, and it protects you, and it protects the town in terms of having some sort of standard. And I don't know what that is, but anyway.
Which is, which of your sites is the most remote from residences?
Uh, they're all needed, uh, otherwise we have to transport diesel across roads. Every, every big field's got, is, the main department of agriculture, Mark, has a site, so we're not crossing roads, we're not wasting diesel, fumes up in the air, so they're all situated in good spots, and then improved by the, the most remote one, three, yeah. It happens now, we had one, I said, new issue, because, hey, like, someone, I don't know, here, I don't know, look at, three, it was five hundred feet, we had never had problems. It was that one isolated, that threw up a red fly.
Dan?
I just want to make sure that you guys, make sure we have all the right permits, because, you know, past experiences have happened in the past, and we don't want to get into litigation because somebody else will come back and say, well, you allow them to do it, how come we can't do it? And so, you know, because he's bringing in stuff from offsite puts you into that solid waste criteria, and we've got to be careful with that. And we don't want to start litigation all over again. And it may not be from these guys, and I don't expect it from these guys, but I think they probably run a good operation, but it could be from somebody else.
Well, that was my point, you know, trying to.
Hey, how come? And we all know the past history.
Yeah, but I think, uh, I think track record factors into it too. I, I hear you, I hear you. I mean, especially.
But the past history may come back and say, hey, I want to be involved with this. I can't.
Well, again, I think we shouldn't be compared to other farms. We've studied hard, we've worked hard, uh, we're gonna be in compliance. I think we shouldn't be given a bad chance of proof that we're good, uh, which we really should, should get. And the other thing is, with your comment, I mean, how many farms in the Randall that would, that would be able to comply with something like this? Four?
All it takes is one to throw us in all kinds of litigation, that's all it takes, and we've been down that road before. Nothing against you, Mark, I just, we need to make sure that we have everything covered right, so that we don't open ourselves up.
Right, and that's sort of what I was talking about. It really has nothing to do with you personally. I think we all believe that you're gonna do the right thing and be a good steward of your farm. The question is, what happens to the person who comes after you, or beside you, or has another farm, and somehow questions the flexibility that we gave you, and wants the same flexibility, but that person's not going to be as good a steward. So by giving it some shape of a maintainer.
Well, wouldn't it go with the acreage you're applying the product on?
Yes, and maybe there's a formula. I don't know what it is, but.
Well, there might be, but, well, there is, with the nutrient management plan, but if their guy's got one acre, he might want to approve it, but somebody's got three hundred acres of fields, I mean, and he needs so many pounds per acre, and it's gonna be applied in good management plans.
But it depends on how much, way, it really has to do with how much you're gonna bring in. And so that's, that's the sticking point, cause you've got to get a separate permit for that. And I've been trying to, you know, read about this and figure it out. So the question is, how much do you really think you reasonably need, and whether or not that conforms to what we think we can allow?
We did try to come up with another, like I told you, what grandfather said, if you go back to the pile, and there's none left, and he deals a half gone, you haven't got enough brought in.
I understand that, but.
What, what the formula is will be how many pounds. It would take probably a year to figure out how many, uh, how many yards.
Well, so do you think it's fifty percent? Is it thirty percent?
No, I don't think, well, I, I.
So what do you think about it?
I thought it was thirty to forty. I started with ten, but now when I'm thinking about it, it could be probably, probably thirty.
Through the chair?
Thirty percent of what?
Yeah, through the chair.
Yes.
I have a, I have a question that.
Go ahead.
I have a question that, uh, is probably best directed to Tad.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, can there be, uh, can there be time limits associated with this permit?
Oh, you can do that, sure.
So, cause Mark's asked for a fair shot at this, why not tie it to a specific period of time and see how that works?
I don't have any thought with that.
Could do that.
And that will give you a chance to sort of balance out and take a really, you know, deep dive into what you need and how much you need to bring in, and so on and so forth. And so, you know, it's sort of like a.
Okay. Got a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Marty.
Uh, your shell byproduct, uh, is it liquid? Any of them liquid? Because not all the time when you have shells, everything else is.
He's only such.
That's where I'm going. I mean, for what? What about like all your rubber bands and everything else?
I'm strict on whatever.
No, 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 I'm only asking, I'm only asking.
They don't allow rubber bands.
Because when you have lopsers or anything else, half the time it's always, you got the rubber bands. I mean, and, uh, you can spread it, but it's kind of hard to chew a rubber band and, hey, and it's all along the way, you know?
I'm probably stricter on my property, maybe many considerations for it.
Well, the other, the other good question is, you know, you were saying you have three hundred acres. Okay. Actually, of that three hundred acres, how much of that is not woodland?
It's not woodland?
Yeah, but why, 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 what I'm trying to get at is, is three hundred acres one thing, okay? That's the overall picture. But turn, as you have been growing, okay, you had to cut some area down from pasture or anything else, but it hasn't been stopped during the, because that's.
Okay.
A whole new project made a, along the way. So that's why I was saying, when you use your numbers of three hundred acres, okay, it's not all fields. So by your percentages of what you need, okay, would be reduced because your, your forestry is not, uh, needed to cultivate your fields. That's why, that's, I don't know, I'm just.
I'm just trying to show you the impact.
Yeah, but I'm just smelling.
Odor.
We all know that. We, we all know that. I mean, we all, we all can have that ourselves, but that's.
That's asking. Yeah, I'll ask him. Mark, when, uh, when do you envision beginning this process, bringing this stuff in?
All right.
Like right now?
Already.
Right now?
We've taken a couple of those already.
Okay, but I mean, you'd like to.
I stopped it with the, with the towns, asking to stop, we stopped immediately.
Okay, so this is something you'd like to resume and resume presumably at a greater rate than you, than you have.
Yeah, so, yeah, if I compost harder, it'll break down quicker, and I can apply it to the land, so my hay crop in two thousand and twenty will be closer to green. And it takes time to get, to, to develop the product, so the sooner, sooner the better.
So if, what, what, well, cause what we're perhaps thinking about would be a sidewalk, and you, you saw how difficult it was to find a, a time for that, so, um, finding the time to do that soon.
What would you want to see in a sidewalk? Snapping locations, maybe?
Yeah. Yeah. And proximity to, to, uh, residences and that kind of stuff.
That roadside, I mean, uh.
Cause he's in R one, isn't he?
R, R one, R two.
R two.
He's R one.
The one on Limerick Road's R one.
There's two, there's two.
Oh, two on Limerick?
There's two of them behind the farm, and, and that's, those, those are two sites there, and then there's, uh, there's one at the Oliver Farm, and one at the existing one.
Can't hear you.
Yeah.
Can't talk much louder, sorry. Um, one's, one's at the Oliver Farm, one's at the existing site, one's at the Talbot Farm, and one's across the street in the, uh, on Limerick Road. That's the one you see easily.
Four.
That's in the corner, that's in the northeast corner of the field, where the access point is. So there's four locations.
Yeah. So I mean, I think the sidewalk, especially considering the, the zones that they're in, is very important.
So, um, I move that we schedule a sidewalk. Can you move this, Reggie?
No. I'll move that. I'll make that motion.
Who's not gonna says you chair can?
I can? I know I was.
Yeah, I think Corinne's right.
Oh, really? Well, I, I know that. Well, okay, would you please move that we? Yes.
Schedule a sidewalk?
Yes.
I'll move that we schedule a sidewalk for the first available opportunity.
Okay, and I'll second that. We'll find where the, what that time is.
Then we'll find a day.
I call little lips plays, bro.
Right after that.
How about, uh, could we, could those of us who, who said, uh, the twenty-second, could we do, uh, like four o'clock?
I can do that.
That's gonna be tough for me.
Four thirty?
Yeah, you're gonna need more time than that anyways.
Think so?
Yeah.
It's dark, it's, it's dark.
Sunset is five forty-seven that day.
Yeah, so it's dark at five forty-five. And the other sidewalks at five, right?
It's five.
I, I could be there at four, but it sounds like there aren't enough of us.
Is this on the twenty-second?
Four, I could do.
I can do four.
On the twenty-second?
Yeah.
I can do four on the twenty-second.
Yeah, it's a Tuesday.
Yeah.
Good.
It's four.
But you could do five? I could do five.
But we.
But not on?
We, we.
No, the year at, at sixteenth.
Oh, wait.
It's the next Tuesday?
Hold on.
No, it's, it's.
The twenty-second.
The twenty-second.
Oh, then I'm not here. Okay. I'm sorry. I'm in the wrong room.
I'm sorry.
So the twenty-second, is that, yea, no?
We have three.
Yeah, so only three of us, so, then, oh, good.
Twenty-third.
Weekend is no good, the twenty-sixth.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-sixth is no good?
Twenty-sixth is, uh.
And that's a Saturday?
I'm available the twenty-sixth.
Wait, I'm not, I'm not around there. Yeah, I've got to commit that Saturday.
How about the twenty-third? It's a Wednesday.
I'm back the twenty-third, what time?
Five o'clock?
Nothing.
Five, five on twenty third?
Not, not for me, sorry.
One, two.
I can do it.
I could do it.
Roger, no, do it's twenty third?
Wednesday.
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay, so I'll be there, cause I'm, my plane lands and I'll be back. At five o'clock, on the twenty, on the twenty third.
I sub move.
We have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, I wish they'd wrap up for the twenty fourth, so we could get started.
Wednesday, the twenty third.
Need for a public hearing? On the twenty fourth?
Yeah.
I think that's, no, I don't think, I think there's, yeah.
We're gonna need some quandary.
Yeah, we're gonna need time to kind of mull it over and kind of digest it.
Need time.
I have one on sixteen.
No, not, not.
The sidewalk, four o'clock is, is that four o'clock or five?
Five.
Twenty five. It's a Tuesday.
Twenty second to Tuesday.
Tuesday, Wednesday.
Okay, got it, go advertise them.
Yeah. Um, you're gonna send everybody an email so we don't get confused, right?
Yep.
Oh, good.
As soon as I get.
Are you BDF?
Yes.
Oh, okay, you're other business.
Almost didn't recognize it, right?
Yeah.
Other business?
Yeah.
Full move on.
Um, yeah, I think we're.
Which, which of these sites will we be meeting?
I'm just asking the same thing.
You meet at the farm?
On Mountain Road or?
Meet at the farm on Mountain Road? Yeah.
Across, across from the, uh.
The dump?
Nope, right before that with the concrete slabs.
Or train station?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, I know where that is. Oh, I can't wait. Okay, BDF, other business.
Other business.
Hello.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
I just wanted to discuss, um, the possibilities and kind of bring the attention of the board. Um, the upcoming, as the Farmers Bureau described, the upcoming land boom of solar farms. And I have been approached by my agent, who has been approached by one of these large companies. In this article here, I just put it up, if you guys are interested in checking that, okay?
Does everybody have his letter?
Yeah. Um, I just found this article recently and I had, and I kinda highlighted stuff that would help guide me through the conversation quickly tonight, and, um. I'll use the glossy. So, these, yeah, one of the, one of the twenty eight mil. They, um, they're looking for property that is close to substations, close to three phase power. Um, and the, the particular company that contacted me is looking for parcels up to thirty acres. Um, and what this article talks about, the Maine Farmers Bureau touched upon the fact that these companies are already cold calling a lot of residents and, and the Farmers Bureau is concerned with taking too much farm land at things, cause their prime land that these solar companies are looking to build their farms on is typically gonna be something that's already opened, something already cleared, um, and close to a good power grid. But the power grid is the most important part, so there's also, um, land like my land that, um, could be, is nice south facing, um, has a good slope and, um, and has accessibility to the power grid. So, right now, the usages, um, for the ARD zone which I'm in, um, have wind, have criteria for wind power on them. So I was here tonight to talk to you guys about how do we get criteria for solar power. Kennybunk, the town of Kennybunk just put up a, a big project right by their power line, so I went down and had a conversation with them this morning and, uh, asked them how they got it approved so quickly and what have they learned about it, uh, cause they also do not have criteria. And they said their biggest thing, he just kinda laughed and said Article eleven, uh, which I just looked up and it was basically, uh, what they call it, it was a Site Plan Review Committee, Site Plan Review Board, uh, and that's kinda how they were able to get pushed through, and then he said buffers and setbacks, and that's a big thing this article talks about, is when these farms come in, um, solar farms is, um, the biggest thing, is making sure that buffers are met and that, you know, cause, um, neighbors hear about it and they get very quickly, not my backyard, so, um, you know, I think that's one of the biggest things that, that town Kennybunk is running to and then a lot of these farmers have run into as they're trying to lease their land. Um, these companies are going for, and this is discussing here how much money they're offering, um, but they're going for twenty to twenty-five year land leases and, and they're like sharks right now, they're, they're calling people, um, so, so it's coming. So Governor Mills, um, there's new law created and it, um, got rid of a lot of the criteria and things holding back these farms from coming to Maine, but now those have been lifted, um, they touch upon that in here, and basically now Maine is, is one of the top, um, places that these companies are looking for. So there are two or three companies in the state that have started solar, um, projects and they are either putting the door, but a lot of these out of state companies are trying to come make friends with people and, and get on, get, um, get their foot in the door up here as well.
Did Kennybunk use Revision Energy, do you know?
Um, I don't know, I think they were mentioned in this article, um, but.
Kennybunk used solar down the street. Solar market, da-da-da.
Solar market, yeah.
I read it tonight, da-da.
Cause I live right around the corner.
Cause Revision is a Maine company.
They are, yeah.
But they also just completed a huge project in the town of Brentwood, New Hampshire.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, right next to the town hall, and so it would be interesting to talk to somebody over there just to, you know, find out more.
Yeah. But, um, does it impact the land differently than, I know what a solar farm looks like? Right.
But it's much different than having wind turbines.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely, and, and, um, this article kinda touches upon that too, that down in Massachusetts is one of the leading states in it right now, and they have some farms that, um, they can do amazing things, they can make these panels float on, on, you know, on water, but they can also have animals grazing underneath, some of them they're mounted six, eight feet off the ground, and they have sheep grazing on a three hundred acre farm um, underneath all solar panels, they're working with farmers to figure out how to do wind rows in between their, in between their things, so, um, they are very customizable.
Yes, but you see with the sheep, guess what, there's a reason, it's called low maintenance.
Yeah, they're also grassmowed.
Cause otherwise, you know, your fields would have to be taken care of.
Yep.
Or anything else.
So it's.
So the, 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 the hay, as we would say, would not overgrow and deplete the, or scratch the, the, the panel itself.
Yeah.
I mean, uh.
Yes.
It seemed like this was, yeah, an oversight we, we didn't think of, so.
The town had mentioned at the time when this was written, wind power was, was the most.
Yeah, that, that was more.
Yeah.
Yeah.
My question, I, if I could, through the chair?
Yes.
Ben, do you have any information on what the tax status of a solar farm is for municipal taxing purposes? Is there any way we can find out?
Just equipment tax?
Yeah, well, I'm just wondering if it's all exempt because of better or Betty, because it's a, it's an industrial piece of equipment and therefore is exempt from our local taxes.
But it's not, it's not.
Sounds like it would be more like a fixture, wouldn't it?
I would think so, but I'd, I'd really like to find that out, you know, what the, what, if there's any tax gain or tax loss to the town.
Yeah. But the, but the other, like you said, and I was reading it tonight, is under your Maine Farm Act, there were a lot of this, and they're also turning it, US, there was some other little group there, because there was one over in Hollis, New Hampshire, uh, who's just recently put one up also, they, uh, and then they were also staged, now you actually lease the land or buying it, I mean, are they buying it?
Um.
I mean, just to be nosy.
Yeah, yeah, no, absolutely, um, right now, it sounds like they're, they're kind of after a lease, um, and they were talking.
A twenty-five year lease?
Yeah, twenty, twenty-five year lease, um, up to eight, nine thousand dollars an acre for the year, per year, per acre.
And who?
That's high.
And what, and what grid was.
Yeah, it's high, where a farmer could lease out a hayfield for fifty dollars an acre.
No, because turn out of my, I was reading tonight, it was like going really well for fifty, maybe.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Yeah.
Two thousand dollars a cent.
It's driven by big money companies, and, and they, uh, they talked about that a little, so Maine has it capped out, right now, they can go up to a, a five megawatt farm, then Maine has them capped out right now, and that produced like seven point two million dollars a year or something.
And whose power grid does it feed, does it feed Maine or does it feed another state?
So, it looks like they are mostly going to feed Maine, they're mostly setting it up so customers can get on and sign up for benefits, um, throughout the year, or they can also just, um, get discounts, but it, right now, that five megawatts could service up to six hundred houses, and it's usually localized in that area. So they're trying to get to a.
So it's local benefit.
So it is local benefit.
So it'd be like KLP or something like that?
Yeah, feeds into, if it's, if it's.
KLP, the power lines are right there.
KLP line, yeah, so they have to go through the distribution, you know, what they do with that power is up to the utility, but, but it goes into our grid initially. It's not like it's bypassed like they're talking about with CMP quarter. It's not bypassed, it goes in the grid and CMP order KLP regulates it in terms of their pooling of it, anyway they want to.
Now, question, is any of this tipped?
We could. But the problem is, what's real, and that's why I'm asking evaluation.
I know.
I'm asking the valuation, because I could tip it, but if, if I don't have that much increase in value, it, it, there's no tip benefit.
Yeah.
I gotta have a, I gotta have it like an eight, I gotta have it three or four times value to make it worthwhile to do a tip on it.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I've done a little bit of research on this also, because, you know, it's in the news, but one of the concerns about these is it's, it's good for the farmers because they can make a lot more money, but it's also bad for the farmers because now there's a lack of hay, because they're not hay in these fields anymore, so people that want local hay, they can't find a local hay because now these fields are filled with solar panels and the farmers aren't actually hay in their fields.
And that's the big reason that the farmers.
If we're not, if we're not going hay, we don't have to put down compost.
But these are two.
Rights, so I mean, where do we wanna stop?
These are two reasons why, are one of the two reasons why my property is actually pretty private, is because it's not currently farmland, it's currently rocks that I, that Labby gave me a hold on, getting it to a rough, flatten it down so I could use, so I'm currently not on farmland land, and also, um, as we know, I am very restricted on my trips per day by the DOT coming out of my property, so this is, um, kind of an exciting venture for me because I'm, I'm very restricted on what I can do in my commercial zone and my expanding ARD zone.
Unless you're senior.
We, it, it would have to, yeah, I am on thirty-one acres and thirty-one.
So, so if you propose to do this, this is the parcel that we all are very familiar with?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't know if you had a second parcel closer to the, the land.
Well, and, and I do, in full disclosure, I, and Phil Labby told me, I was allowed to talk about this, but right now, we could actually set it up on the backside, use fifteen of mine and twelve of his, it is currently approved for residential subdivision, and he would come to amend that, and we would share the, this land lease and put it all in the back half, which is already sold and self worth, um, and be hidden from one eleven. Um, and then also, I also have someone who's looking at purchasing my whole property right now, he just had it appraised, I haven't heard back from him yet, um, so if my property was to sell, Mr. Labby is hoping to, to take these same buyers and, and put him out behind his place, right next to, right next to his power line, so. Uh, and he told me, I was allowed to talk to you about that, um, but that's a huge option, because he, he's right next to the substation out there and right next to the power lines, and so, and he's such a good guy, he's like, you know what, let's try to get money on your property, if your property sells, um, you know, we'll put it on our mind. I wouldn't benefit from that other than help with rent.
Ben, I'm sure Chad already explained the process, we, we can't, we, even if we did come up with a policy to allow it, uh, it would have to go before the town voters, which could be, um, eight, eight, nine month process.
No, and, and I assume that, that's what I want.
Dan?
That's what I want them to learn tonight, is, so I, when I talk to these people, I can give them a real estate timeframe.
Yeah, I'm looking to see if we can get a special town reading in November, and that will be for the building committee, for both of the buildings, so we're, right now, I think we're shooting for a Saturday in November, so I'm not sure if there's enough time for that, I know it's pretty quick, it's gonna be a little.
It's gonna be real tight for a Saturday.
Public hearing to have, and like, ask, out to.
Yeah, and I. Right now, it's, it's a large company that's contacted my agent, telling him to find land, and he's contacted me, said, I think your land's perfect, and I've looked into it, so, so. Right now, it's so preliminary, I'm in here tonight kinda just feeling out the possibilities and, and what my process would be to get it to that point.
What do you understand the minimum lot, desirable lot size is, Ben?
Um, their, this company that approached me said their minimum lot that they wanna find is thirty acres, you know, it sounded in this one like people are looking at fifteen to forty acre lots, um, but a thirty acre lot could get you, from what I understand, could get you to that five megawatt maximum that the state has set. So I think that's why this company's looking for those thirty-eight acre parcels.
Ben, wasn't it turn on, actually to turn on to get one megawatt per state, I was reading tonight, said it, anyway, uh, two point five acres equals one megawatt, uh, or something other.
That, that's under, let's see, thirty acre Millardville solar farm, well, he's doing seven point five megawatts on a thirty acre farm servicing one six hundred homes. Um, yeah, I, I don't have those numbers.
No, no, I, I just happened to, quite peakable before the meeting, I mean, that's why.
Yeah, that's cool.
And I was trying, cause I had no idea about it, I mean.
But I do think it's something that we should look into, I mean, I don't think, we should close the door, it is coming, I think we have to control how it comes, but.
In this article, I mean, they've talked.
You know, we have to understand it better, but, cause what they built in Brentwood in New Hampshire on one twenty-five is really unattractive.
Yeah.
But I think it feeds, uh, a large portion of that area, and I know it does the whole town hall, the fire department, and a whole bunch of other things, it was all Revision uh, that did that, so, um.
And that's what came up right into.
Is your air drive is attractive or unattractive?
Unattractive.
Okay.
Unless you're standing right next to it, it's kind of.
Well, you know, it dominates the whole field, and they're all at an angle, they're all in a row, and there's something just.
It does, it looks like a glass, black glass.
The state of Massachusetts has it at every exit on the turn.
On the, well, it might as, you know.
Well, it, it, it makes sense, cause it's residual land they don't need.
What else you have?
It does have a, it's not the prettiest.
Yeah, it's hideous.
It is hideous.
Yeah, yeah, I, I don't deny, and I, I think that's why, um, Dimer is over there, Kennybunk was like, you know, just watch boundaries and setbacks, is, would be my biggest advice.
Well, you're also down below, the, the, the point is, you're, you're sloping to the south.
My property, yeah, it would be, especially.
Which makes you very, very valuable.
It does, yeah, and, and especially with, um, with Mr. Labby's next door, if we did that whole deal, I mean, it would be hidden from one eleven.
Pretty much.
It would be pretty much hidden.
Yeah, that would be a prerequisite, I think, that it didn't, you know, mar the landscape, but, yeah.
From my perspective, the only thing I'm concerned about is, you know, is, forgive me for saying this, but I'm concerned about giving up limited amounts of business land for something that's not gonna generate a tax revenue, the town is seeking.
Right, well, that's one of the things, that's my guess.
Yeah.
So, is it, are we gonna get, i- is it windfall, is it a break even, is it a loss?
And is it arable or not, you know, so?
That's not arable, we don't have to worry about that.
No, no, what I'm saying is, cause that's what Dan's saying, that, you know, uh, it limits the amount of hay that can be, uh, you know, feed the community and.
Well, and we're gonna think of. Of, of my particular life, we are talking about my particular life, it's between a bunch of residential places, and I couldn't put big business in there because of my traffic flow restrictions, um, and, and the amount of ledge that I'm dealing with, it, it's costly, and, and the road standards, it's very costly to build up this property, um, but these, you know, don't require roads, they're accessing them with their tractor. You know, so, it's kinda why I'm like, wow, this is kind of a home run for, for my particular area.
I wonder if there could be a, a new category of taxing.
Yeah, I'm sure there is.
It's not a court man, it's not a building, it.
So can you find out about that, or?
I'll try to.
Farm Land Trust has already compiled.
They got a new, new one called marijuana at ten percent, so I mean, uh.
We don't get any of that, by the way, that all goes.
You can get a whole fact sheet, um, from the Maine Farm Land Trust, the fact sheet that they've made to help farmers navigate these, these deals, and they said that the bottom line is find a lawyer familiar with solar development before you sign anything.
Can you email that link to Chad?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, just like that.
Right in here.
But just so he has it in an email, and he can just click it.
Yeah. Yeah, no, this was really great, I found.
But, but you see, what I was, what I was looking for tonight was turn out definitions of solar farm, okay? And, uh, there were state, federal, and different towns who already have it. They already have a setup, a definition for the solar farm already, for. I mean.
American Plains Association already has those, those, those definitions all set up, we just wanna make sure we tweak it so it meets state limitations, especially the five, you know, five megawatt limitation to, to solar farm, but they're pretty much the same throughout the country. It would depend if there's anything extra you guys wanna add, especially regarding buffering or visual, visual access. But I think from our, from your standpoint, considering we have a limited amount of, of business there, we wanna, we wanna get some, you know, he'll want the tax.
Yeah, I think the assessor would know a bit about that, she'd be able to.
I, I think we'd have to probably, I think we're gonna probably have to talk to assessors that have these.
Yeah.
I think that's the best way to do it. You know, I can, I can go online, but I, I'd rather talk to an assessor, find an assessor who's, who's actually taxing this currently. Even if it's in Massachusetts, you know, someplace where they have one, or New Hampshire.
Right.
You know, whoever's got it, cause assessing is different from state to state, but the general principles.
The baseline of what it was before and what it is now.
What it is now, what's the benefit?
There's, there's.
What's the, what's the depreciation too? Depreciation's an issue.
To make this happen, but it's certainly.
Yeah.
There was Vermont in New, New York.
An idea that should be considered, I think.
Vermont, New York. I mean, uh, but also too, they were, where I was reading tonight, there's, down in Texas, okay? They're having, uh, uh, some places that like five hundred acres. I mean, uh.
Yeah.
The only good.
Right.
Yeah, that's the only good thing you.
So I don't think we really gave you, gave you any actionable information, but.
No, a little bit.
You know, I think we're open to looking at everything because if it benefits the town, especially if we can put it in a place that's not too unattractive and we all benefit from it, I don't, you know, I think it's, we'll, you know, try to see if we can make it work.
I'll get on as fast as I can.
Yeah, cause you don't have anything else.
I don't have anything.
I know.
Yeah.
So.
And so, and what should I do going forward? What kinda things would you like to see from me, um, as far as trying to get this onto an approved usage?
Well, you could, if you've, no many ordinances have been written in Kennybunk or anyplace else.
Yeah, keep doing research.
Well, I would compile, I would look around and, and I'd be interested in reading it too, cause we did it for the home occupations. I went to all the other towns and looked at all the different parameters, for instance, for home occupations. So I would stay within the state of Maine and see what companies have been used and what are the parameters of their ordinances, um, how they were adopted, what the benefits to the local municipalities are, to the state at large. And then we get a chance to kind of sift through all the information and see, uh, where a Rundle fits in. That would be my suggestion.
Okay.
Um, so just send Ted a bunch of links and just divide them up into little categories and.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Now, the other thing is.
Yeah.
Solar, solar market down here, okay?
Kennybunk?
Anyway, they have done.
Down on Limerick, down Limerick Road.
Oh, oh.
That's, he's, he, cause he did Kennybunks.
Right.
Okay?
Yeah.
But he has also done projects in Vermont and, uh, New York and everything else.
He's quoted in this, yeah. We, um, that, yeah, he'd be a perfect person to go talk to.
That's why, you know, that's why I'm giving you that quote.
Thank you.
And I know the principles of revision and so I'd be happy to get ahold of them too.
That'd be great.
So, yeah, I think we're gonna seriously look into it.
Cool, thank you.
So I'm so glad you made it.
Yeah, yeah, thank you so much.
Okay.
It's good to be back.
Okay, well, thank you again and, um, you'll be communicating with Ted?
Yeah, absolutely.
And he'll disseminate the information to the rest of us.
Awesome.
All right, super.
Keep going after him.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I'm practicing my Robert's Rules of Orders for the, my next debut. My curtain pop on the twenty-fourth. But is there any other business any of you would like to discuss? Is there anything else? Ted, do you have a report?
Um, I have, uh, things have slowed down a little bit. I just got the, uh, new information and new submissions from, uh, Oak Ridge Terrace, so they'll be coming in. Um, they have rebuttal, they have amended their plan and they have got a new stormwater, um, report to, to give to us uh, in terms of other projects that are looming on the horizon. Uh, we've seen a little slowdown in subdivision activity, but, um, we have a number of other projects that are in the wings right now. Um, the Schwecker prob- property is, I know that's of interest to this board because they, as you may recall, the Schweckers came in and wanted to amend, uh, the DB two, DB one district, extended DB two district up in, to cover the Schwecker property. And remember that the intent was to put it in a, uh.
Event center.
Uh, an event center. And the, the, the neighborhood outcry against that pretty much, the planning board shelved that concept. So they're, they're looking at doing a different project and, uh, right now, uh, they're, they're exploring a number of different alternatives. I do have another fifty-five and older community that's, that's, uh, being explored. Um, and the property, the puzzle property next to, uh, to CACP, you know, Rundle cottages as you, as we know it. Um, they're looking at, uh, also at a fifty-five and older community. Not sure how that's gonna work there, but, um, so we have a, we have a number of projects that are, that are going great guns and some other ones that I've talked into consultants. In fact, I've got, um, a request for a zone change that'll probably be coming to you perhaps by the November uh, for an increase in density, um, based on, um, carrying capacity in a particular zone. So, um, they're pulling out some stops on that, getting some good, good data and information. So it should be interesting, uh, meeting with some more people tomorrow about that issue. Uh, in terms of, uh, other items, you all, if I, if you hadn't seen it, you know that the, uh, basically the, the Maine Law Court has dismissed, uh, the case against you folks individually. Not you, cause you weren't here.
That's right. I, I heard that.
DuBois had sued, um, individual members.
Through the grapevine.
And, uh, so that has been dismissed and that's a dead issue. However, just in case you hadn't picked up on my e-mails, uh, Maine DEP had, as you know, revoked the DuBois permit, but, uh, DuBois has actually filed a, a, an ADC, I believe it is, um, which is a, uh, a request for an appeal to Superior Court to, to overturn, uh, DEP's decision. A brief has been given. Um, and, uh, we are not gonna be actively participants at this time in that, in that appeal process. I'm not sure we're gonna file an amicus brief on that. So, um, that's essentially, we have a number of other enforcement actions we're doing right now and I'm not gonna talk about them until they come to some sort of fruition. Um, Bandaloupe is still chugging away.
Oh, my God.
Uh, yeah, yeah, they're almost there. I'm, I'm doing a, a revision on, uh, on their lighting plan, which is gonna go well. Uh, also White Pine Subdivision, I know that's not yours, it was, it's ours. But they're, um, they're finishing up, they finished up, they put their first, they put their, uh, base code on their, uh, their road, out there, White Pine Road and.
Where's this?
This is the old cough subdivision.
It's off the Senate.
Yeah, okay.
It's off Old, Old Post.
Old Post.
Oh, Old Post.
Old Post.
Okay.
And, uh, so that's along, they will be, uh.
Yes.
Yeah.
And it's super efficient.
Do you move it in? No, can't afford it.
Yes. It's not inexpensive. Um, but we've done.
Where are Old Post's, uh, uh?
It's right after Rundle Woods. It's right next to Rundle Woods.
Right, right past, across the street from Vinegar Hill, but.
Just about, real far.
Before you get to the bridge.
They run behind me.
So they're, they're pretty much done. That is a energy efficient community.
Is it sold out, do you know?
No, it's not, no. I did a, I was, I did an inspection with, uh, with, uh, Public Works and my engineer. We all went out and did a, a walk out there. We did a punch list, um, with the, uh, with the contractor. Um, they've pretty much gotten that done. They probably will be coming back in and requesting that the town take that road. I don't know if they will or I'll have the homeowners association do it, but the intent is for that to become a town.
How many homes back there?
Twenty-two.
No, ten.
No, totally allotted.
No, there's only ten lots.
Yeah, I think it's only ten.
It's only ten lots.
I drove down that road just to see, cause I'm very nosy.
I've been down there.
They'd lose one because of the wetlands.
What is this?
I mean, that runs the whole way down to almost.
That runs, that's why, that's behind your house. And then one of the reasons why they couldn't do anything about that was because it also, um, DEP had it mapped, is all being resource protection back there. And we had it mapped the same thing and then the, uh, the applicant came in and had Mark Hampton go out and we went out and remapped it and found out that that was grossly an error. So, um, there was actually a stream out there of some associated wetlands, but it wasn't a gigantic wetland as, as shown on the National Wetlands.
There's some swamps out there.
There's some swamps, but it's not tremendous, it's not, uh, all linked together like.
But a lot of good apple trees back there.
Uh, it looks like it was formerly at some point, yeah. So it's an orchard back there, okay, that makes sense. But, um, yeah, and what I saw.
Poke on down there one day, it's like.
It's nice.
Wash your car afterwards, but yeah.
Well, not anymore, cause it's paved.
Oh, it's paved?
Yeah, it's paved.
So.
So that will probably be coming into the slot at some point.
Also too, seafood item for sale.
I saw that too. I know nothing about it. Also, you'll note that there's a for sale sign at B and B Trucking.
Yes, that was another one last night.
Who's?
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
It's, it's not listed on Maine unless it's recently been listed.
I was listening to the house or they.
The house.
The whole thing. No, the whole thing.
Oh, the whole thing?
That's what I understand. Yeah. Corey, can you, can you report to the board?
I can. I'll let you guys know.
They can't do the house, cause they can't separate the house.
Oh, it's all, still all.
It's all one lot.
The house, actually the house and where the garage would be is one lot. But then they bought the other lot next door to it, that's separate. So there's actually.
On Old Alfred Road.
Yes.
With a trailer.
The old trailer, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. But that is not, that's not where the sign is.
No.
Sign is right in front of the other.
And I've been, I've been told by insiders that that is actually, is for sale as a build-up lot, as a, as a commercial lot. Yeah, with, with approvals, if you're a truck repair company. And you don't deviate from the approved plan, so.
All right.
There we go.
So, anything else, gentlemen and madam? I will make my own motions.
Make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second that, Roger.
All those in favor? Okay.